All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start here in just a moment. We're gonna, I'm the city manager and city attorney, real quick. I take accountability for the closed session going a little longer. I got lost in time asking questions, and it is my fault, so I appreciate your patience. All right. We are fully operational. So I'm gonna call to order the Royal Oak City Commission meeting for February 13th, 2023. We're gonna begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Perush, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
On February 5th of this year, my mom, Clara Jelinski-Moldoney, turned 100. Our family was able to celebrate this remarkable achievement this past weekend. Our family is blessed that we have been able to share even a portion of her remarkable life. I've been thinking about some of the stories that she's shared over the years and how they shed light on some of the issues we're facing today in our own community. Clara's parents operated a general store in the small hamlet of Boston, Ohio, that was the company store for nearby paper mills along the Cuyahoga River south of Cleveland. My mom remembers that during the Depression, her parents routinely gave extra food and household items to area families in need as the poverty rate was extraordinary. Since Clara was born, the U.S. has created a safety net of services that assist to eliminate poverty, but it's not perfect by any means. The need to address food insecurity continues today as individuals and families in our own communities face layoffs, loss of housing, chronic homelessness, and other factors which deprive adults and children of nourishing food. Clara is the first of her family to graduate from college, earning a degree from what is now Cleveland State University with a dual degree in both chemistry and psychology. While she worked at many government chemistry labs during World War II in both Cleveland and Washington, D.C., her first passion was mental health and the complex workings of the human brain. Since Clara earned her degrees in the early 1940s, we've made great strides in the understanding and treatment of mental illness. But as we understand all too well, here in our own community, there is much still left to do to eliminate the pain and stigma associated with mental illness and to educate ourselves as to appropriate nonviolent and effective interventions and treatment. Clara is one of the last surviving members of what we call the Greatest Generation. That generation attacked the challenges they faced with resolve and strength and left their community stronger and more resilient. But the work isn't finished. As a community, let us follow Clara's parents' example and thrive diligently to address the food insecurity issues that face our community by supporting local efforts and by working to address the root policies that undermine the long-term problem of hunger. As a community, let us mirror Clara's compassion and willingness to understand the many faces of mental illness and continue our efforts to decrease and even eliminate the tragic results of our lack of understanding and compassion for those who are impacted by this. May we all go forward tonight feeling blessed that we can bear witness to the accomplishments of so many, including those in our own community whose years of experience light our path forward. May we share Clara's passion for compassionate understanding of mental illness so that we reduce the tragic consequences of mental health episodes here in our own community and across the country. And may we share my grandparents' compassion for the poor and food insecure to eliminate the terrible toll it takes on individuals and families throughout this area. Let's let their legacy light our way forward. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Perush, for that moving invocation. It's a personal touch as well. This brings us to item four in our agenda tonight, which is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented? Commissioner Douglas moves. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda. All right, that brings us to item five, which is public comment. Just a few rules about public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, Mayor Fournier, then come up to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful, the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so your comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate to email us or contact us or find us at the local grocery store or kids' events, wherever you feel appropriate to let us know your input. Please note, the City Commission typically doesn't respond to questions during public comment. However, we're taking notes, and we'll ask those questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer it to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled to be discussed on the agenda. Our city manager is also taking notes, and he follows up as well. So with that, who wants to go first? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Howell. I live at 1026 Pinehurst in Royal Oak. I have three brief things I want to package together. One is a thank you, another is a request, and the third is an announcement. Let's start with the thank you. In my preparation to come to the meeting tonight to speak on an agenda item, I called City Hall to see, how do I navigate romy.gov? I can't find the agendas. And a young woman named Amy Brody, one of our municipal clerks, answered the phone. She was extremely helpful, took my hand over the phone, and led this senior citizen through Safari, how to find what I needed. So I want to give a shout out to Amy Brody. Number two is a request. At my last presence at a commission meeting, when something of importance came up for a vote, you took a voice response. And it was difficult for a very full audience to know who was voting what way. I did write a letter to the commission following that and asked that, not for the consent agenda items, but for the ones with meat in them that come later on, that if you do a voice vote, that you also accompany it with a hands up so those of us in the audience are able to see who is voting what way. That's my request. The third is an announcement. I am a 50-year resident of Royal Oak and a 50-year member of the First Congregational Church of Royal Oak, which was founded in 1842. Founders from our church are buried in our Royal Oak Cemetery. This year, we will be celebrating 181 years as a congregation of serving the greater Royal Oak community, and I'm very proud to be part of that. Congregationalism is one of the mainline Protestant denominations. We choose and hire our own ministers. They are not sent down from above like many other denominations are. And this last Sunday, we voted to call Reverend Christopher Kurtz to be our 30th minister at the First Congregational Church of Royal Oak. We have been in four different buildings in this city since the church began, was seated, and we're now at our fourth, and hopefully, hold on to it, location. We're on the southwest corner of Crooks and Webster Roads. Our address is 1314 Northwood Boulevard, even though we're on an intersection of two major streets. And we anchor Northwood Boulevard, our church on one end, whoops, and the shrine at the other end. So I want to tell you of that and invite you to come see who we are and what we do. 10:30 Sunday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howell, and congratulations on 181 years. That's no small feat. Is that Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. Came here to speak about parking, but first of all, I'm a definite no on the marijuana at Art's Beats and Eats. It's a family affair. Let's keep it that way, guys. It's encouraging that the city manager will include the DDA working with the MPS to formulate recommendations by the second commission meeting in February to fix the system. The DDA is the parking committee. Time is of the essence now that the MPS system has been expanded into the surface lots. And expanding the system into the surface lots voids any claim to eliminate the system due to nonperformance. You attorneys ought to go back and get another shot at contract management. Anyway, my recommendations are: accept the DDA recommendations. Have the DDA hire Rich &amp; Associates to monitor the MPS data and report monthly the change in the number of violations due to exceeding the new 20-minute grace period. Expand Rich &amp; Associates' MPS data monitoring to include the surface parking lots now that the MPS system has been expanded to include the surface lots. Place spots on TV and in print advising of the changes to the parking meter system that are being made to make it more user-friendly and reduce the number of citations. Provide signs on Washington and Main Streets similar to those in the surface lots that advise of the 20-minute grace period and a local phone number to call for assistance. Add larger and more prominent stickers on the pay stations with the local phone number to call for assistance. I had to hunt for the police department number on the pay station to call. Anyway, reestablish the on-street parking ambassadors with properly identified jackets so we know what they are. Now, additional comments before I run out of... It's hard to believe that an MPS parking system has only been operating for 13 months, given the devastating effect that it has had on the downtown businesses. It was interesting to hear that a Rich &amp; Associates vice president could not figure out how to use the MPS pay system and left and still received a citation. And Rich's confirmation that 77% exceeding the five-minute grace period will disenfranchise the patrons. That Rich &amp; Associates recommends on-street parking ambassadors and increasing the grace period. And I noted that the commission agrees that the number of citations is excessive, and the mayor agrees that they need to work on the system. I will be interested to see what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Ashley.
My name, Alan Ashley, Royal Oak Manor. I'm here to talk about number 10, Art's Beats and Eats and the marijuana. I live across the street from Art's Beats and Eats. There is no way that anybody can tell me that they can prevent the smoke coming from Art's Beats and Eats marijuana-smoking little room is going to hit the air. We have enough problems with drunks and people parking not parking. I do not want to see people high on marijuana driving, trying to drive on Royal Oak downtown with all the traffic. This is gonna be a complete disaster. The police are gonna be overloaded. This should not be. This is a family thing. Little kids don't need to be walking around or listening and get a whiff of smoke from the marijuana tent or whatever and see people walking in or stray from their parents and walk into the tent with the marijuana. That is nothing that anybody here with kids wants. This is a family event. No on the marijuana. We don't want it. We fought it before. Let's keep this out. I know how much you people like Jonathan Witz and all his good stuff that he brings. This is one that is not good for Royal Oak, and I think it should be a no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Kristen Steer. I've been here a couple times. I live at, or my wife and I own the home at 421 Forest. I've come here and talked about the same thing last, you know, probably four times. In November, I was pretty passionate about, for those of you that were here, I was almost the guy was crying about paving this road and about my children, you know, being outside and potentially a car hitting them because there's no curb, et cetera. And some of the members that were here that day, you know, kind of had laughed it off, not members of the audience that had spoken against that, that were against paving the road. But just three nights ago, there was a drunk driver that had flipped their car literally 100 feet from that home, you know, from where our home is. And, you know, the Royal Oak Police came and, you know, they, you know, had obviously taken the person away. Luckily, they were there, you know, in the nick of time. But, you know, it just kind of goes to saying that, you know, there's no curb on that street. And I've been a proponent to pave the street, and I appreciate everybody's consideration for moving forward with this. Next month is gonna be public comment. I just want you to remember that, you know, literally 100 feet away from where I said a car could potentially jump the curb, they hit this curb and then flipped their car. And there's no curb where our home currently is, and we would like to have a curb there. So appreciate the time, and I appreciate always your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Steer. Yes, sir.
Hello and good evening. My name is Matt Dargay. I'm actually not a resident of Royal Oak. I live over on Crooks and Claussen, though my GPS often thinks that I live in Royal Oak. And I'm here because I'm here on behalf of State Representative Sharon McDonald, who has a few precincts in Royal Oak. I have the pleasure of serving her as her legislative director. On behalf of the representative who unfortunately cannot make it here this evening, I wanted to send everyone in the room her warm greetings. At least once or twice a season, either Rep. McDonald or I plan on attending the City Commission meetings to provide updates on her work in Lansing. Her committee assignments are the following: higher education, behavioral health, energy, transportation, where she serves as vice chair, and families, children, and seniors. She is an excellent legislator to reach out to with thoughts or legislative ideas about any of those issues. She also has recently begun working on moving legislation of her own, such as legislation related to protecting vulnerable adults from online sexual abuse. In doing so, our office is building relationships with lawmakers across the political spectrum. Rep. McDonald held her first community conversation two weeks ago, where we had a great turnout. We'll be holding our first community conversation in Royal Oak on Monday, April 3rd, at the Senior Community Center, and we hope to see many Royal Oak residents there. And of course, we'll be posting many updates between now and then, reminding folks about that meeting. And between now and then, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. We want to hear from the City Commission about how we can work together to serve the residents of Royal Oak, and we want to hear from our constituents in the 56th district about their thoughts and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dargay. Yes, sir.
My name's Ted Strunk. I live at 727 Golf. I'm here to talk about item eight. Item number four, contained in the resolution of approval adopted at this council's May 23rd meeting, stated that the petitioner shall make a good faith effort to meet with the group seeking to preserve the Maine Art Theater. I present here a photo as evidence depicting the result of North Maine's good-faith effort. It's an empty space where the art theater once stood. Tonight, the petitioner is asking the city to let them out of their commitment to LEED's certification and to trust they'll make a good-faith effort to achieve LEED's certification, which may or may not ever occur. And then they ask the city to include in its agreement that there be no penalty resulting from their failure to meet the LEED certification. In a letter from Plunkett and Clooney, attorneys for the petitioner, it states, "We would strongly encourage there be no penalty associated with the effort to acquire LEED certification should it fall short." Where does that leave the city? In the Newman Consulting Group letter of January 22nd, it states, "Attached is the preliminary project checklist we made before the project had actually started. It shows what credits we think are possible before the actual design is done." I could not find this checklist among the many documents presented by the petitioners. I believe that checklist would reveal how well the design itself reflects LEED certification values, and I suggest this might be an area where North Maine could expedite the certification process by making design changes now that would earn them points. Has North Maine attempted to expedite the certification process? Have they submitted their plans for preliminary review by the Green Building Board? What steps have they taken to alleviate this great obstacle to the furtherance of this project other than asking the city to eliminate their public pledge for an environmentally conscientious building? I humbly ask this council to uphold the resolution of approval adopted at the May 23rd meeting and to help North Maine in any way possible other than modifying item five, to walk across this important threshold together with the city of Royal Oak into a more sustainable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strunk. Mr. Gantina.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Woody Gantina, 1422 Edgewood. I'm here to speak on item number eight as well. Frankly, I'm a little concerned that we have to be here, but I also understand it is a little bit of a complex issue. So for your debate and deliberations here tonight, to the best of your abilities, in your minds, if you might be best to decouple the issues of the temporary certificate of occupancy and the LEED certification. I fully understand the developer's desire for a staged or expedited occupancy, as they put it in their proposal. This is very common for buildings of this type and not unique to this project, but this is a business decision by the applicant themselves. They're putting themselves in this position, and it is not related to the LEED certification. If I understand the staff report correctly, and Mr. Teng Twain correctly, it would still need to satisfy all requirements to obtain a temporary certificate of occupancy if that was what they desired to do. The LEED certification process, on the other hand, begins from day one of the project, typically during the design phase. So the notion in the information that was provided that the certification process does not begin until the building is complete is not accurate. The process is ongoing from the inception of the project through till the end. The certification itself certainly isn't completed till the building itself is done. I think we all want the same thing here at the end of the day, a nice building on that site that's economically viable for the developer and is LEED certified. So I would like to suggest for your discussions later a few different things, because I understand the complexity is around how this condition was written and tying the certificate of occupancy to the LEED certification and the complications that arise from that. So potentially, there's the ability to allow for a temporary certificate of occupancy, but the final certificate of occupancy being tied to the LEED certification. It allows the developer time for their expedited occupancy, complete the building, but still holds them to the commitment of achieving certification. In lieu of that, potentially having the developer post a significant bond to ensure that they will complete that certification, as walking away from a $1,500 registration fee is simply not enough of a disincentive for a developer to simply decide they don't want to do it at the end of the day. I believe that posting a bond like this is very typical for private work that happens in the public right of way. I have examples of that myself. Whatever your opinion may be, perhaps you table the decision tonight so that an amicable and fair solution for all sides can be achieved with more information being received on both sides. We passed a Sustainability and Climate Action Plan last year. Please don't back down from that. Achieving a LEED building and showing Royal Oak's commitment to sustainability, I think, is a great thing that we all want. So hopefully, that helps you in your discussions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gantina. Anybody else wish to speak tonight at public comment? Ms. Lyons-Briker.
Hello. I'm Julie Lyons-Briker, 5072 Thorncroft Avenue, and I'm here to talk about number eight also. I only learned about this today, so I'm trying to get my head around what I want to say, but I think Mr. Strunk and Mr. Gantina covered much of what's important here for you to think about. In my reading, the piece that really troubles me after all of our sustainability work, creating the sustainability plan and thinking about what kind of community we want going forward, is this line that says, "In order to encourage future developers and property owners to pursue LEED certification, we would strongly encourage that there be no penalty associated with the effort to acquire LEED certification should it fall short on points." And that, to me, is troubling because, you know, the agreement was made that we will move forward with this certification. So I think Woody has brought up a number of good points, one being that this is tabled so we have more time to think about it. We can't be the first city that has run into this kind of issue. And given that we are members of the U.S. Green Building Council right now because of our LEED for cities certification, that there are resources that are available to the city of Royal Oak to find out what other cities have done. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm sorry, Ms. Howell, it's one public comment per speaker per evening.
That's not what your instructions say. I've read them. I'm a teacher. You did not say that. It's a different subject now.
It's not per topic. I read it in the intro, the rules. All right. Well, we're gonna close public comment and bring the discussion back to this side of the table. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Perush.
Item number K.
K?
Letter K.
Letter K. Anybody else? Commissioner Macy?
F.
F. Anybody else? F and K. Doesn't sound right when I say it. But, you know, sometimes words come out before you listen to them. All right. So the consent agenda now consists of City Commission meeting minutes from January 23rd, claims from January 27th, February 7th, February 10th, approval of purchase orders, departments of public services and recreational request authorization to fill pending vacancies, approval, recommendations, park recycling initiatives, award of contract SW 2301, 2023 concrete pavement replacement, and sidewalk improvements, award of contract cap 2302, 2023 sidewalk improvements program, and award of contract cap 2325, 2023 joint ceiling improvements, approval of the Michigan Department of Transportation Construction Funding Agreement for Rochester Road improvements, and Special Event Ordinance Amendment, second reading. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as well? We have a motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Colow. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. So we'll just go in order here. Commissioner Macy, F.
Yes, I just, I thought Ms. Donahue looked bored back there, so I wanted to give her a chance to...
That's more of a look of contempt.
Could be, could be. Could you remind us where we are in this process with this, what this, tonight is on the agenda and where we are?
Sure. So we are at standard resolution two, which is basically just the city assessor presenting his report for what properties are in the district, what the cost allocation estimate is per property, and it also tells us when to have the public hearing of necessity. So that's pretty much the gist of it. So our public hearing of necessity will be in March. I think it's March 13th, if I have that right. And that's when the public can come out and say they're forward, against it, whatever. The final step is normally a public hearing of assessment, which would be the month after that. Since we have 100% in favor, I believe those have been waived in the past, but I have to do a little more research on that. So there may only be one more step left to go.
Okay, the second hearing is waived, is possibly waived, but there will nonetheless be in March a chance for anyone who has public comment to come before this is finalized or any further decision is made.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I'd like to move approval of this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy, a second by Commissioner Duba. Discussion. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Item K. Those opposed? Motion passes. Item K, Commissioner Pruch.
Yes, it's coming up on my screen. But in the meantime, all of you have a hard copy of the annual report from the Commission for the Arts 2022. And what we would like to do just very, very briefly this evening is just give you a very brief oral report, because the Commission for the Arts has not been as active over the last couple of years because of COVID. We kind of took things on hold for quite a while. But 2022, we were able to activate a number of the programs that we've been targeting, and we had a pretty good year. We have also very ambitious goals for 2023. So with that, I'm going to, with no objection, allow Jeremy Peckins, who is the graduate city manager fellow here, who is responsible for coming to this Commission for the Arts meetings, as well as Susan Parkman, Assistant to the City Manager. But we're going to give Mr. Peckins an opportunity to give us just a real quick overview of the report to let you know where we all are. That we're not all about roads and funding and buildings, but we have some cool art things going on, too. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. And to the mayor and the city commission, is on behalf of the Commission for the Arts, I am here to present to you the 2022 annual report. I also want to thank Jason, our chair, and Jody for coming and support as well in the audience. One of the major highlights of the 2022 report was the 11 pieces of art that we were able to add to our permanent collection at the city, all of those of which are on display currently. We did add a new one today in the room next door that you guys met in. I hope you all saw it. And those came both through donations as well as the Art Explored Program, which was successful this year. We're looking at the 2022 goals. We have a few that are still in progress, and we extended those to our 2023 goals. And we are, if you have any questions about the annual report or any of the specific goals for 2023, I'm open for any questions at this time.
Commissioner Duba.
Not a question, but I did see the new piece of art in the meeting room, Coffee for My Community. Is that right?
Yeah, so that one, the artist is local, and she got the coffee grounds from the coffee shop across from the music theater, and that's what's used to create those pigments.
I like it a lot. It was a nice addition to the, and to the city's collection.
Yeah.
This all looks great. I greatly appreciate the work going into this and all the people that have been serving on this committee since we formed it, what now, nine years ago?
Yeah.
Nine years? There's been a measurable impact on the city, and excited to see how things get back up and running post-COVID. Special thanks to Jason Gettingham, who's dedicated so much time to this effort.
Oh, wow. Commissioner Macy will win the face-off.
I just thought of a question. So if someone's looking at this and they're like very excited by the new pieces in our collection, they want to find them, how would they figure that out?
Yeah, so I'm in the process of updating the website on the Commission for the Arts to have a geographical map of the area where you can find all the pieces. The mural page is updated, and that has all the mules around the city. But now that we have all the new art in place, I'll be updating that one shortly.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Pruch.
There are going to be hard copies of this report available not only in City Hall, but also in the library, the senior center, a couple of other public buildings. So you'll be able to see this and find this and find more details. Right in the middle of this report are the five new acquisitions that we acquired this year. Four of them are actual wall hangings or paintings that will go on a wall. The fifth one is a ceramic-covered bowl created by one of our ceramic artists in the community. And I'm not sure where that's going to be placed, but it's not all just paintings and wall art. Mr. Peckins may know where it is.
Yeah, that one is in the library. When you walk in, it's going to be on the right-hand side through the main entrance.
Okay. And it's white. It's gorgeous. She did an extraordinary job. So yes, one of the goals for the Commission for the Arts for this coming year is to take the Art Explored, a lot of which is concentrated in the downtown area. We have a lot of sculptures downtown within the DDA area. One of the goals is to expand it out into the community, more so than just the downtown area. And we're looking at a variety of options for that. We all, we already know that, for example, there's going to be a new bronze sculpture of the Hayber Finch family founders. It's going to exist in the new park when that's all created. So that's one example of things going outside the DDA. But that's a goal for this coming year, is to get more things out there into the community.
Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Pruch. I just want to say, this is a beautiful report. I mean, it is, it feels like it's interactive and it's just paper, but there's so much in here and it's so well put together. So I guess it's no surprise that the Commission for the Arts is, it has a great creative report. But thank, you know, thank you to the entire team for that. You know, and this also highlights art that's more than just something you look at. You know, the sharing the warmth project is in its, what, fifth year? I don't know how long this has been, but it's actually providing warmth to Royal Oakers, or maybe not even Royal Oakers, just people who are cold at the library, need a hat, love scarves, right? And that, you know, the library is a place for all. So there's just good that happens out there. So I want to thank you for that. I did notice that there's an idea this year to review and revise the sign mural audits, to streamline it. Can you explain that a little and how we can make this a little bit potentially easier for applicants in the future?
Yeah, that one, it's, it's tricky, but we're trying to figure out a way to where we can differentiate between like a sign and a piece of art. But the current process kind of binds us to that, like, specific distinction and for the Commission of the Arts to make that decision. We don't want that portion to go away, but we're currently looking to see what other cities do, to see if we can model it as something that makes it a little bit more streamlined. So that's kind of all I have on it right now. I don't think, I think that that one's, one that we're actively working on.
That's great. No, and I'll just, you know, I want to finish with, Royal Oak really appreciates art. You know, the, the community loves it. I've been on Art Lock that the mayor hosted once, that was extremely well-attended, and we had a great opportunity to walk around downtown, and the mayor was able to show off all these vibrant pieces, and people just came out and loved it. So this is a, it's a great thing for the community. So thank you all.
I think they really like me struggling to be a docile. And here, oh, which one's this one again? I had to read, because I didn't memorize them all. But, but no, I'm really impressed with the, with the report, and every year we get this. It's really just a snapshot in time of what we did the, the last year. And, you know, with these things, there's always sometimes, you know, the first couple of years, you get all the low-hanging fruit, and, you know, things sort of idle out. I can't say this is the case with the Commission for the Arts. Every year, every new project, every vision they set forward is just doubling down on the success from the years past. And I think it's a, whether it's art or not, it's a testament on how a group comes together and really lives the mission and executes the mission and really is an example for, you know, every other committee in all the communities in this area about how to do something really awesome. So my, I don't want to say congratulations. I know they put a lot of work and effort into it, and so does staff, but it makes a meaningful difference in the quality of life. Sometimes on those rainy days, those cloudy days, that, that overcast that comes in in November, doesn't leave till May, you know, seeing the art around town, I think, you know, knowing that we care, we have pride in our community, and we have an outlet of expression in our community, makes a difference. It really makes it, it's not all about roads and buildings. Things like this make a huge difference. So the work is invaluable. I think we need a motion, though.
Yes, we do. I will move approval of the resolution as it's presented in front of us.
Motion by Commissioner Pruch. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Duba. All right. Discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Down through all my markings here. All right, that brings us to item seven tonight. We have our Ms. Donahue here with us tonight for the approval of the 2023 Traffic Committee Resolutions. City Engineer Donahue.
Yes, good evening.
Oh, Mr. Godek's here as well.
Yes.
He just popped up there in my blind spot so quickly, I didn't even see it.
Snuck up.
Do you want to go, do you want to say anything first?
I, I'm just here to answer any questions. We have five resolutions in front of you, and they all followed with staff recommendations except for one. And if there's anything I can add or help explain, that's what I'm here for.
Great.
Sure.
So maybe we go through them?
Yeah, I'll briefly summarize them. Okay, sounds good. So we have five resolutions, as Chairman Godek noted. Our first one is from Agenda Item 6A. This was a request to look at speeding on East Lawrence Avenue between Main Street and Rochester. We found that the 85th percentile speed was between 17 and 26 miles per hour at different locations along the corridor, and the average daily traffic was only about 200 vehicles per day. So for this one, no changes are recommended based on the data. Item 6B was a request to look at congestion issues on 14 Mile Road. This was a complaint from a resident who is having issues getting in and out of their driveway, which happens to be pretty close to Woodward. So the traffic queues were backing traffic up and making it difficult. And they also brought up concerns about the center left turn lane on 14 Mile Road, saying it was dangerously narrow and lots of side swipe potential there. So we went out and did some field measurements and found that the center left turn lane actually was striped too narrow as you get closer to Woodward, only about eight and a half feet wide. 10 feet is ideal. We did get a variance from MDOT on that road to do nine and a half foot lanes, but it looks like in the end it got striped a foot narrower than it should have been. And so the committee is recommending that we re-stripe 14 Mile Road this spring to allow for the appropriate lane widths. And as part of that road is, is owned by Birmingham, we'll make sure that they know about it before we go out there and do that. Item 6C was probably our highlight of the evening in terms of public comment. This was a request to look at speeding issues on Maxwell Avenue between Catelpa and 12 Mile. We found that there was pretty high speeds there, 29 miles per hour to 31 miles per hour, and heavy traffic, 1,900 to 2,200 vehicles per day. That's kind of out of the normal realm for a residential street. It is a major road in the city, though, so it's, it is kind of a cut-through route as well. Because it is a priority-two street for snowplowing, it does not meet the criteria for speed humps. And so as a staff, we said, let's rule that out, and we prepared an exhibit with traffic calming for the neighborhood to take a look at. So there was traffic calming islands, and there were bump outs. We sent letters to everybody on the street to let them know about it, and we heard back from them in force that they really hated the idea. We had got a lot of emails, and I think 10 people attended the meeting who are very much opposed to any changes out there that took away parking. The primary concern, as I mentioned, was, was about loss of parking, and we really just heard from all the properties that would be specifically impacted. So the Traffic Committee, after discussing it, wanted to consider allowing speed humps on this road as a special exception to our criteria for speed humps, which, as you recall, we just approved that back in December. So they're kind of looking for almost a preapproval, because we don't want to go through a whole petition process with the street, get a petition, and then have the commission say, well, we're not going to allow this. So that is how the resolution is presented, is just to see, would the commission be in favor of this if they are able to bring a successful petition forward? The next item was 6D. This was another speeding complaint. This was on Linden between Main Street and Rochester. We had 85th percentile speed of 26 miles per hour and 220 vehicles per day. So pretty good data. No changes are recommended for that one. And then our final item was 6E. This was a request to look at adding four-way stops to all the intersections on Williams Street and on Troy Street in the downtown. And so we evaluated every single intersection out there, and we looked at all the different warrants that you have for stop signs, which are based on crash history, on the traffic volumes in both directions, and then also on sight distance. Based on sight distance issues and the fact that there was a fairly higher number of crashes compared to all the other intersections, Traffic Committee is recommending that we install a four-way stop at the intersection of Fourth Street and Williams. And then additionally, they looked at some of the sight distance issues that we found at other corners and wanted to improve one of them. This is at the northwest corner of Fifth and Troy. We can move the "No Parking Beyond" sign about another 10 feet to the north. There's only one parking stall there right now. It's giant, so it really would just shrink it down to a normal size and provide more sight distance for people that want to turn at that location. And then additionally, at that one single spot, there's one of those old legacy parking meters that the police department said we can just get rid of that if they're not really monitoring it. So that's part of the resolution as well, is to take that parking meter out when we do the changes. So that's all I have, either of us. Happy to take questions.
Questions? Commissioner Douglas.
So I see Mr. Filipski booked it out of here before this item came up on the agenda, but so, but I'm going to ask about speed humps. Obviously, you know, your, your very extensive previous study of speed humps said there are places where you, they are undesirable. This Maxwell is one of them. And yet, there's the possibility of speed humps. What is that? Why are they bad?
Well, the biggest concern, and the reason it didn't meet this criteria, was it's a street that we snowplow every time it snows. So it doesn't need to get up to four inches for us to be there. So we'll be there every single time it snows, which can, you can put a lot more wear on the speed humps themselves if you accidentally clip them with the, with the plow, so you might be replacing them more often. And then it's just, it's like another thing for the drivers to have to remember every time they go out there, is to watch out for them. I did speak with DPS. I spoke with Mr. Filipski, and then also the operations manager out there, and they said, if the commission wants them, we'll work around it. Like, they, they can work with it. So it's, it's hard to say, like, do we waffle on the criteria so soon? Or, you know, I struggled with that at the meeting, and I, perhaps Mr. Godek has similar thoughts.
Holly put that actually really well. We, the Traffic Committee struggled with it, too, and at our time pulling a resolution out of the committee members, because this is the first one for us, the speed humps. And, you know, we're, we're pushing back on one of the criteria of being at a priority-two snowplow route. On the positive side, to do it, or at least to get this resolution to where you would entertain a, the residents putting a petition together, it's a poster child for a cut-through in speeding street. The 85th percentile, as Holly said, was over 30 miles an hour. Traffic counts real high. It's a half-mile stretch, real straight, 11 people out speaking towards doing something here. So that's why we thought we'd try the speed humps.
So I have a question, maybe, between hump and bump. Again, I didn't see it coming out either.
It's been a long meeting.
The, my understanding of a hump, though, was like what we have on, like, Catelpa, you know, towards Campbell, where you kind of, you know, if you get to a velocity of, allegedly, if you get to a velocity of like 30 miles an hour, you really feel it, and that the bumps were the things that you see like in condo complexes, you know, or apartment complexes. Just so we're on the same page, when we say humps in this, are we talking about, like, what we have on Gardena?
So on Gardena, that's considered a speed table, so you basically raise the entire intersection and you ramp up into it from all four directions.
Yeah.
It's a similar concept as a hump. A speed hump is generally 12 to 14 feet long, so in the travel direction, and almost the full width of the street. And the idea is the same, though, right? Like, you feel it if you're going really fast. It, it makes you want to drive the speed limit. You don't have to slow down to 10 miles per hour to get over them. But, uh, speed bumps are like parking lots, yeah, where you really need to slow down quite a bit, or it's going to hurt your car.
And then the issue with the plows is, we go over it several times, because it's always a priority route, and you have to have a higher velocity with the plows in order to remove the snow, which creates a uncomfortable ride and/or damage issues to the, to the rig. And then, and then when you talked about calming alternatives, you know, pedestrian aisles and things like that, did you, did you consider, like, just bump outs, you know, on the side of the road to minimize any impact to street parking, just to slow people down? And was that one of the alternatives that were discussed?
Yeah, so that street has driveways like every 40 or 50 feet. So what I like to do are the median islands for calming, because it doesn't mess with drainage on the street. It can still calm and kind of provide that visual impact for drivers. But we, literally, I could fit it in one spot in a whole half-mile stretch, and everywhere else, there were too many driveways to make it work. And so we did do bump outs at a few of the intersections, again, just to bring those lanes in and make it feel more narrow. And that's where we really heard kind of outcry from the residents, as you're taking away all this parking adjacent to my house. I never would have moved here if this, if I'd known this was happening. And just people were really adamantly opposed. And it's also pretty expensive to do bump outs, because you do change the drainage.
Yeah, sure.
So then you have to do new piping and new catch basins. And I was really surprised how quickly that dollar figure went up as we did that estimate.
And painting lanes just to narrow it for psychological purposes?
We could. It's not as... It's not as strongly recommended as a way to really control speeding.
Sure.
I think it's more of a feel-good measure, honestly.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, Commissioner Douglas, done?
I'm done, yeah.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on what we're talking about here because I'm a little confused about the recommendation from the Traffic Committee. So rejecting staff recommendation and then request approval of the potential to install speed bumps on this road pending signed petition from the neighborhood. So I just want to get clarity on the intent of the Traffic Committee and how we should be interpreting your recommendation.
It's very well put, Mr. Douglas. We were struggling making that motion. When the criteria is met, when there wasn't an issue like that, then Holly can move forward with the citizens putting together a petition. Because this process is new to us and you, we didn't want to have the residents go through the burden of putting petition together, getting all the signatures on it, and then come in front of you guys and you say, no. So we tried to word it in a fashion that would circumvent that. And I don't think we did it properly, but do you get the flavor of what we're trying to do?
So the intent is, if they come forward with a petition, I assume representing more than 50% of residents on the street? Is that the threshold?
65%.
65%.
So if they bring us a petition, your intent is, if they get to that 65, then we are going to accept this?
We're going to pass it forward to you and you would consider it. You wouldn't toss it out because of it not meeting criteria number three, whatever it is that...
Okay, so your recommendation to us to install the speed humps is pending them reaching the signature threshold?
Right.
Okay, okay. So then, what's before us tonight is whether or not we agree with your recommendation, in which case the residents would bring to you the petition?
That's how I would assume.
Yes, well, we would reach out and generate the petition for them to circulate.
My primary concern is that, I want to make sure the residents understand the potential inconveniences that could come with that speed hump. If it's being torn up every year, either they have a nasty-looking speed hump there or they're going to have construction on their road for a week or two every summer when we rebuild it every single construction season. And I'm sure that's something they don't want either. Was that discussed at all?
Not so much. We're focused, because what was brought forward by staff was a lot of the street improvements, the islands and bump outs. And it was clear by everyone there that that was not what they wanted. And we did a show of hands, too, that I took a straw poll and said, you know, are you guys going to distribute a petition for a speed hump? And that got favorable response. But as you put, if this resolution passes, it's still going to come in front of the Traffic Committee. And we would discuss those items in detail, where, you know, it could still impact some parking. As Holly said, it's, I think, a 12 to 14 length. So you can straddle them, you can still park on top of them. And, you know, some people are going to complain, I don't want it in front of my house. You know, when we spread them out. So there'll be some friction, I'm sure, as it comes forward, if it comes forward, for sure.
Okay, I mean, I'm open, I'm not opposed to it. I want to make sure the neighborhood knows exactly what they're discussing and what they might be getting into. But I'm open to the concept, for the same reasons I think you are, is that this road's definitely a candidate for some sort of calming measure. Thanks. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ms. Donahue, you know, looking at this neighborhood and look at the maps provided, this isn't a multifamily neighborhood, right? This is not a densely populated area with a high density of population, correct?
I think it's mostly single-family homes.
Yeah. With, it looks like wider lots and long driveways. So I guess the idea that we're losing parking, it's not that there is areas of duplexes and, you know, high-rises in here. It's all single-family homes, right?
It is.
Okay. And then looking at the, you prepared, it looks like you drew the, what these bump outs could potentially look like on Page 20 of this packet. Three of the, well, yeah, three other areas that will lose parking are at a T intersection, right? And you're not allowed to park in a T intersection, right? You can't park at the spot that intersects the road.
You're not supposed to. A lot of people do.
So that's at least three spots right there, then. It looks like this island that you produced. If you, let's say we were to cooperate, maybe take that island away, would take away most of the, you know, over half of the no-parking area, correct?
Yeah.
So I'm just asking this, you know, I live off of Lincoln and I know that all the bump outs and traffic islands at Lincoln have substantially slowed down, at least my speed, down that road. It is a much slower road now. And if I'm correct, I mean, the science says that this is how you slow down roads, right? Like, this is, the science says, if we put this in, the road will slow down.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I have a hard time not doing this when it's been our standard operating practice. I was sick the meeting in which the traffic bumps were approved. But it is a relatively new item in town. And I don't think that wavering on, like, shot one out of the gate here might be the best idea, right? You know, let's maybe establish some precedence here. And, you know, if we're not going to do it on P2 roads, let's not do it on P2 roads? Not think, okay, well, you know, maybe every P2 road can come before us and, you know, talk about this. I think this creates a lot of headache for the Traffic Committee, quite frankly. You know, 10 houses of the 80 or 90 on that block can show up and cause a headache, right? Like, that's, so I think there's a reason why, when we look at Traffic Committee reports recommendations, we do look at the science behind it and what says is best for the area, right? Because we're trying to, all Traffic Committee recommendations are trying to improve the neighborhood, right? And it's not always intuitive. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that, one, we're not losing all that much parking in what is just a residential neighborhood with deeper lots and driveways at every house, so there's parking for people. And then the science says that this will slow it down to begin with.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I created the exhibit, but the outcry was intense, so.
And if I might add, the houses that do front Maxwell, a lot of those don't have the normal setback that you'd see. And the driveways that do come out onto Maxwell are rather short, if at all. So the folks that did speak about parking were ones that are like corner lots of the intersection ones. And we did go into a little bit of back and forth on what we could do differently with bump outs, as the mayor referred to, or islands, possibly moving the islands actually into the Ts so that it wouldn't impact driveways or parking. But very little spot to do that. And then there was some concern about turning radiuses for emergency vehicles and larger trucks being able to get through the T with an island right in that section.
Yeah, and then I guess that goes right to the, you know, the concerns already voiced at the staff of Traffic Committee, too, was about all the vehicles trying to go down it, or larger vehicles. So I guess just a bump out, you know, I wonder if there's another solution, maybe that, you know, we haven't thought of yet before we consider traffic humps, bumps, or whatever the mayor's going to call them today?
One of the folks did reference, I believe, the street that you're referring to, Lincoln, too, with the bump outs and how it affects the bike lane. I was very concerned about that because you lose the bike lane at that point at a bump out. And that bike has to go into traffic. And he was very concerned about...
So I'm happy you mentioned that. That's not a bike lane. That is a parking lane. And it's dangerous when people use it as a bike lane. It is a parking lane only. It's not, so the bike lane doesn't disappear. In fact, the bike, they're supposed to share the road with bikes all up and down Lincoln. They go, now, people do use it because it's not often parked in. But that is a common misconception, I believe. But it is not, as you sound here shaking your head, that is not a bike lane. It is, the bike lane doesn't disappear because it never existed.
Well, if you ride a bike and you stay to the right, and then you've got to create an intense sharing situation where you have to veer over.
Yeah. And I guess, you know, one more thing, back to Lincoln. A lot of the bump outs have became bio-swell. So it's advancing our SCAPs and what we're trying to do environmentally by retaining water. That is, you know, this is a goal that we've set. This is how we achieve these goals. And Ms. Donahue, quite frankly, has been amazing at bringing us plans and ideas that keep water in the ground and out of our basements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Bruce.
One of the difficulties with this particular one is that the stretch between Catalpa and 12 Mile Road is exactly a half-mile, is very straight. The road is much wider in appearance than the feeder streets that feed into it. So that when you go from Catalpa, or when you go from 12 Mile down to Catalpa, it's a slight downgrade, just a little, and you think, oh, I can fly down this street. Just because the appearance of the street gives you the idea that there's lots of room, there's not a whole lot of traffic, and I can just hit the pedal and I can go down 40 miles an hour to get down to Catalpa. Because it's a convenient cut-through street to get to Catalpa from 12 Mile. You don't have to go to Vincenta and wind your way through the neighborhood, or you don't have to do Crooks and tuck your way back into the neighborhood that way. You can go straight down Maxwell at 40 miles an hour because it's wide and it looks like it can handle it. So I, number one, I'm concerned also about the functionality of the speed humps, given that appearance of the road. Ms. Donahue, in that half-mile length, about how many speed humps would go into there? How far apart are they?
Well, they're 300 to 600 feet apart. So whatever that math is, I can do that.
Doing the math for 5 miles, I can't do that, so.
Four?
10?
No, not 10. Then it would be like a railroad track.
There's like, just over 5,000 in a mile. Divided by two, it's a 2,500, 3,000 every six feet, four or five, or six?
So like 11 to 12 potentially?
Every five to six hundred feet?
It's a lot.
Yeah. So, you know, that's a lot of a maintenance concern, especially for the frequency of the plowing, that it is a route, too. And they're going to be going down there every single time. By the size of it, the width of it reminds me of Benjamin, which is also a feeder street or a collector, I guess they call it a collector's street, where it collects traffic from the neighborhood to get to a major artery. And the volume of traffic, I think, indicates that. I don't have a magic solution. I'm not so sure that the neighborhood is going to like the speed humps once they're installed, even if they are installed. But I don't know that there's other alternatives, other than what you all suggested, which is the bump outs. I think that's the best solution. But there's no question that there are going to be a couple of households that are going to lose street parking. And so there's going to be some objections. They're certainly not the majority. They're like maybe 10%, as Commissioner Collo said. But I think that's the best solution.
And just on that point, do we know, we probably don't have any, you didn't measure it, but how many people are actually using the street parking? I'm only looking, I'm only looking at the Google map here, and it looks sparsely populated. But that could be, you know, the time of day the satellite photo was taken. But, you know, I mean, we have, I have people park in front of my house all the time. And I got to, if I were to park in the street, because I have an early morning meeting and I don't want to shuffle cars around, I park, I walk the, you know, 100 feet, you know, to my house. So there would be available parking on the street if you had the bump outs and everything. But you wouldn't necessarily have it right in front of your house if you're one of the folks that happened to have the bump out. But what you wouldn't have is a car parking in front of your house, which also is a common complaint that we get. So, yeah, I got mixed feelings on this because I agree with Commissioner Perush. I don't know, I mean, we had the policy in place, I think, was it Commissioner Collo that said, like, you could have this slippery slope issue? You know, where you have, like, okay, now all these streets, P2s or Priority 2s are going to, you know, you let Maxwell have it, why can't we have it? And then now you're into this, you know, speed hump here, speed hump there. And with the bump outs, we definitely know that controls speeding. The street, what, 33 feet, 34 feet?
I think it's 35.
35 feet wide?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a wide street. But again, it's supposed to be, it's a P2 to move ambulances, fire trucks, and police cars. Yeah, and I don't know that the speed humps are going to have the effect that they believe they'll have, at least according to science. So the question really before us is, hey, would you be willing to allow them to pull a petition with the understanding that you'll hear them out if they get to the threshold? But I don't know, if you asked somebody on the street and said, hey, do you want to slow down speeding on the street? Of course they'll say yes and sign. If you said that you want to slow down speeding, and we're going to put up these speed humps, and they're going to be under construction every year, and you might have some snowplow issues, and it might not actually solve the issue, you might have to abandon them, and your street's going to look like gunk if we have to abandon them, are you interested in it? You know, they might say something different. Because it's more than just, people are signing to slow down speed. They're not necessarily signing on the resolution, even though they are signing on the resolution, if that makes sense. So, I don't know. Commissioner Perush?
One other point, too, and you correct me if I'm wrong, it's a concrete street, I think. It's not asphalt. So when you're talking about speed humps, you're not adding additional asphalt bumps that can easily, I would think, much more easily than concrete, be replaced and repaired on an annual basis. This is concrete, which means there's going to be concrete speed humps, which are going to have to be maintained. It's going to be a lot more expensive and a lot more subject to certain types of deterioration that's not going to be as easy to fix as if it were asphalt. So that's just, I think, another consideration that we have to keep in mind in terms of this whole jumble of issues.
Right, and well, and honestly, in talking over speed humps with our staff and our inspectors especially, is, you know, constructability, how would we go about this? What should we spec out there? And they all were like, we really should just do concrete. Because when you try and tamp down asphalt in a parabolic shape, it's going to be different every time, and it's not going to look right, and it could be very weighty.
It's going to squeeze its way out.
Whereas in concrete, you finish it smooth, and you can kind of create whatever shape you need it to be. And so that's kind of the draft specification that we've come up with. We haven't installed one yet, right? So we're still tweaking that. But that was kind of where our head is at in terms of moving forward. Even on an asphalt street, we'd probably cut out the pavement and build a concrete bump, which will probably stand out a little bit more as well. One other quick comment, we didn't look at doing the raised intersections like we have on Gardenia at that one, at Alexander, primarily because a lot of these intersections, there's a driveway right across from it, or a driveway that would be in the influence of that ramped area. And it can be really hard, but it's not impossible. Like, we could look at that also as a way to make this work. We just have to really focus on drainage and making sure that those lots still have a way to drain and don't pond water on their private property. And that's kind of why we poo-pooed the idea in the beginning, but it might warrant looking at that idea a little closer. If we're really torn, we know the neighborhood hates this one idea, and the commission's not super excited about speed humps. That might be a third alternative to look at.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I, it seems to me that if people were parking on this street a lot, I mean, if there was lots of parking on both sides of the street all the time, traffic would have already slowed down, leading me to conclude that perhaps there, and if you look at it, I mean, there are a lot of the driveways that have room for two cars, for example. But be that as it may, and I was in the city of Detroit here over the weekend, and there are areas where they mark parking lanes with, like, flexible bollards, like, narrow flexible bollards. And I made the case before for chicanes. And this could be part and parcel of that, where you deliberately sequester those parking spaces along here using these flexible bollards, which, A, protects the parking that people say they need, and B, creates visual barriers to speeding. I mean, it seems like that might be some middle ground, less expensive than building out bump outs and islands, and, you know, maybe more of an experiment to see if it works.
Commissioner Basie?
So I think if they came here, I would listen to them, if they brought the petition. So maybe I'm the outlier on that. I think they might struggle to get the petition signatures. It's possible that they'll be saying, like, hey, do you want speed bumps to slow traffic down? And people will say, oh, yes, I'll sign, no matter, without knowing the full story. But it's also possible that they've already heard a little bit about this because they got a letter from Ms. Donahue already about the proposal, and only 10 people out of these... however many showed up. And those people were very angry, but would they be able to get 65% of their neighbors to sign on to this? I don't know. I have, I understand the point, like, we don't want to be making exceptions to a rule we just made, but I also see the other side of it, is we literally just made this rule. If these people had come three months ago, we'd be like, okay, have your speed bumps, right? Like, we're, they sort of are unlucky in their timing and coming before us after we just made a rule and are now deciding that we are firmly sticking to it no matter what. So I don't disagree with anything anyone has said. I think it's been an interesting discussion, but I think if they came, if, my knee-jerk when we got this, when this came in front of us was, sure, I'll hear it out. I guess I wouldn't promise that we would necessarily do it, but I don't know. That's my, that's my take.
Ms. Colo?
Okay, so just to keep things moving along here, I'm going to, due to the fact that I want to advance the S-CAP, I want to stick with what we've done. I think that I've listened to Commissioner Perush and talked about the visual of the road, I do think that bumping in will help a lot, experiences in other parts of the city. I move that we move forward with staff recommendation for item 6C.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Okay, discussion. Ms. Macy?
So what's actually in front of us is a recommendation to, or like a question, I guess. And so perhaps this is answering that by saying, we're going to go ahead with something else without listening to you, but are we also going to answer the question that was presented to us? If they came to us with, if they went inside the petition, will we consider it?
I think the interpretation is that the staff recommendation would be to stick to the policy and the rule we made, to not entertain such a petition.
All right, so it's implicit in the?
Yeah. That's how I interpreted it. Am I correct, Commissioner Colo?
That's how I interpreted it.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yeah, I'm of no on this motion, just because I'd rather make no change of the road than enforce a change that the folks who live in the road made clear they don't really want.
Ms. Colo?
You know, I appreciate that, Commissioner Dubac, and if we use that logic, Rochester Road would still be, would continue to be a four-lane road in the future, right? Like, we're doing this based on the science. Like, we have science that will come in and say, this will slow it down, this is the best way to slow it down, this is what's worked in other parts of the city. This will advance your climate action plan and what you're trying to do with that. And this fits in with our policy and is what was best based on DPS and life safety, based on the trucks and everything going through the street. So, you know, I think, we look at the science all the time, and in this case, the science is saying, this is what will work on the street. And the science, more importantly, I think, is also saying that there are too many cars going too fast on the street. So like, that's problem number one. Like, you know, this isn't an effort where we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. Like, we know that there's too many cars and they go too fast. How can we solve that problem? The faster that we come up to a resolution to that problem, the more we're going to help. So once again, looking at past items that have worked in other parts of the city, worked very successfully, going on the recommendations of staff that, based on the safety of the fire and police, not in addition to the DPS, I think this is the best move.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yeah, just I have to disagree with the same thing as one, we're pursuing a stated city commission initiative and infrastructure priority that's brought to us by the city engineer, like road diets, like increasing green space. This was, I believe, initiated by residents going to the traffic committee, saying that they're concerned about speeding on their road. So, not the same thing at all, in my opinion.
Ms. Perush?
I agree with Commissioner Dubac. I mean, I think if this was a staff or an, or an or city commission-initiated issue, and we said, we identified, or staff had identified some with problems, like in the Rochester Road situation, where you know you have speeding traffic, and you know you have safety issues that have to be addressed, and as long as we're going to be redoing the road, let's implement the things that make it a lot safer, that's one thing. But it's another thing where you have a resident on Cloverdale who initiated this whole thing, requesting a traffic study, and it led us to this discussion. If we had in front of us the options of speed humps, or the design modifications that city engineering had suggested, or a third, which is the Gardenia, whatever they're called, and pick, if we had to pick one, you know, then that would be one thing. And maybe we do pick the one that Commissioner Colo recommends, and that I particularly care for as well. But this was a citizen-initiated petition and request, and I think that that changes our decision-making process here. And I agree with Commissioner Dubac, that since we can't seem to reach a consensus on which is the best way to go about this, we have questions about the whole speed bump issue. I would just as soon not do anything right now and see what happens perhaps next. But I'm just not comfortable with the speed bump issue enough to recommend it tonight.
And I think that is Commissioner Colo's motion, is basically to take staff recommendation to not allow the petition to move forward for the speed humps, which would result in no action at all on the road, correct?
No.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, it's to move forward with the staff recommendation.
Okay.
Which is the bump outs.
Got it. Commissioner Douglas?
And while I do support the motion as submitted, I'm going to go back to my idea that we haven't yet approved the budget for the bump outs and the islands and so forth. And staff might very well look at this and find an interim, less permanent, less costly solution, such as I suggested.
I'm on the fence a little bit here. I think, I appreciate the motion, I think it makes sense. The only thing that I would, that's given me pause, is like, maybe to pause. And I think that you have a half-mile of road here. How many cars again go down this, 1,900?
About 2,000.
2,000? That's a lot of cars a day. There's a lot of travelers on that road. Travelers are road users, and that road matters to those travelers as well, right? It's not just people living on the road. People use my road all the, I see Mr. Ellison's out there, he uses my road, I think, 42 times a day. I counted up from my kitchen table once. So, you know, people use the roads, people live on the roads, and for me, I think that clearly there's an identified issue here, that there is speeding. There's a couple different solutions, one being the speed humps, which seem to not really be a solution, according to the data, but we have some alternatives. And how many people did we hear from that were really against the traffic calming measures? Yeah. So, and that's a self-selecting sample set that comes into these meetings, right? And that may be representative of the entire street, it may not be representative of the entire street. I think Commissioner Colo's right, I think the right approach is to put this stuff in. I would just like to solicit more information and sharing with the residents of Maxwell so they can, you know, if they do want to come back with a petition, or if they do want to pursue staff recommendation, because a majority of people are on board with that, I think we have to have more than 10 people to really go down that route. So I think I, like, if it were me and I were king for a day, I'd make that decision right now and support the motion, but I want more than 10 people to give us input on, you know, what they want. Because I think we might actually find that the 10 people are the ones that would be most impacted by the traffic calming that are coming, and the vast majority of people traveling on the street, and the vast majority of people living on the street, might actually want those measures, as opposed to the humps. And I don't have that answer, and I don't feel comfortable moving forward with this or moving forward with the humps. I hate to say it, but send it back to committee. All right. Any other discussion on the motion, Commissioner Colo?
Yeah, as to make the motion, if this doesn't pass, I'm not sad, right? Like, I think we're all, we're going to achieve the same thing, right? It's clear that, I think it's clear that humps are not the solution. I thought that that could be a solution tonight. I like getting, I maybe go too fast sometimes, but if this doesn't pass right now, it's, you know, I'm sure the traffic committee and Miss Donahue can come up with something great to help slow down the traffic on this, so, this road.
To slow down, to slow down. All right. I'm going to call for the vote. All those who are prepared, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so that motion fails. So now we have, it could be open, it may not be open, I think we should turn it up or down, or create a motion that addresses 6C, one way or the other, to say, hey, come back later, or do whatever. I mean, if someone wants to make a motion that you think is a... Ms. Dubac?
Is that necessary? I feel like no action on this kind of results in the same situation, where the folks are free to bring the petition to the traffic committee, and the traffic committee will consider and make a recommendation to us. I'm not really clear on what our action here would do, except make a promise we might not be willing to keep, which is, if they get the petitions, and they've been informed as to what happens, and then maybe some of their neighbors come out of the woodwork saying, you know, if 35% of them just hate it and organize against it, I'm not going to say if they go get it and bring it to traffic committee and you recommend it to us, that I'm promising I'm going to support it, I think.
If this motion or resolution was denied without an alternative, to me, that just means that you wouldn't entertain breaking rule for plow rob number two. So it wouldn't get past us. We wouldn't distribute a petition, because it wouldn't go further. So denying this resolution would simply do that. I personally liked Commissioner Douglas's idea of the mullions. I think we could look at this again and do something different. But a denial here, I think, would just kill the idea of a petition working here.
And again, I don't know the votes, or I'm not willing to make a motion to deny that concept either. I'm not sure, if we're going back to the drawing board for you all to consider options with that neighborhood, is there direction necessary from this body? Well, that was my point, is that whenever you're using city resources, like the city engineer to go back and explore more, probably is better for them to get a motion from this table so they know what to prioritize. Or if you do nothing at all, you're right, the thing is dead, because they can't pull the petition. But, I mean, you could also affirm that. But if the idea is, hey, guys, we don't think the speed hump works, we want the city engineer to go back and have another conversation, and maybe bring more than 10 people into the room, and maybe send a letter out, or do something like that within her purview, then a motion probably would make sense to direct her work. But maybe not, Miss Donahue, I don't know.
I'm still struggling to understand what that motion would be. Is the motion to send the matter back to traffic committee to further discuss with the engineer?
Yeah, I think the motion would be that before the city considers, you know, allowing the petitions, that the city engineering staff have a dialogue with the neighborhood or send out a letter that these are potentials and explaining, or have another meeting at traffic committee where more people are invited and noticed to talk about speeding remedies. I mean, I don't know, it'd be up to the city engineer to think, what she thinks would be best to create that interaction. But there's a speeding issue, we want to resolve it. The best way to resolve it is with the traffic calming measures, but it sounds like at least the 10 people we talked to so far do not like those measures. And in my opinion, we don't have, we're not at a point yet where, I believe in getting and garnering support for stuff, or not support, at the neighborhood level. And it seems like only 10 people are participating in the conversation right now, and we need more if we're going to make a decision, or if we're going to make changes to the road. By not making any changes, there's still a speeding issue, which I think we need to address. Ms. Macy?
I wonder if there's a way to get, to put the owners back on the neighbors. It seems like a bit of a heavy lift to tell the city engineer, like, we don't know what you want to do here, why don't you have a whole city meeting and figure it out for us? But I wonder if we could, if we could get a message to them based on what the decision was here. Like, the decision here was that we didn't take action to do any kind of traffic calming. We saw this dichotomy, we couldn't figure out what was the best thing, and it didn't look good for the petition to be approved if they brought it here, but it seems like there is some consideration of what the people there think. So if they, if they have their own city meeting where they call the neighborhood together and bring something back to us, the traffic committee would entertain further action on this. We're not setting it aside.
I mean, it would be awesome, just two petitions. Which one wins?
I mean, right? I don't know. So maybe Miss Donahue would rather not have people mucking around, and she'd just rather do it herself. But it just, it seems like a lot to ask of her when we can't figure out what we want to do.
Ms. Colo?
You know, I think one thing when you look at the traffic committee in general is, we often ask citizens, what do you want to do to solve this problem, right? And that not, might not always be the best approach, because they're not traffic experts. They haven't gone to school to design a road. They don't know what's available to slow items down, right? Like, that is, therein lies the crux of asking someone, how do you fix this? Well, I don't know, I just want to fix, right? And I think we kind of went through this up on Delamere, right? Where we had an option we didn't quite like, and we asked Miss Donahue to go, I'm sorry, my son knows I'm at a city meeting, he's trying to FaceTime me. And his mom knows I'm at a city meeting. But up on Delamere, we asked, asked Miss Donahue, come with a couple different options, and then we kind of picked from the three, because we asked an expert to design the alternative options. I think in this case, that might be the best solution, is to go back to traffic committee and say, look, speed bumps aren't going to probably make it past the city commission, it's not looking like that's favorable. Here is one option for traffic calming, here's another option, and here's a third option. You know, if, you know, please come give your input, and then, traffic committee, please discuss these three options that we presented, and come back to us with a recommendation.
Mr. Godeck?
If I may respond to a little bit of that, you're right, we're not traffic engineers, but we do listen to the recommendations given by them. And we spend much more time in detail than you may have here. And we deal, if I may, we deal direct with the public, and a good showing by the residents, and we hear them out, and we take that in as well. So it's, you know, we try to balance both.
Yeah.
And a number of us are engineers, and can relate to the data that's presented to us. So we tend to look at it in great detail and really value Holly's experience at the top level, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wanted to be clear, I wasn't saying the traffic committee is not experts, I'm saying, asking a citizen to go pull a petition to tell us how they want to solve that issue, the citizen on the street might not be the expert.
I took it wrong.
I'm sorry, it's not drug charge or the traffic committee, this, it's definitely, yeah, same or, we don't know if, you know, Jane Resident can know, or, you know, Joe Resident's going to know what the best solution is.
They usually come to us as experts as well.
Well, let me ask, Ms. Donahue, you've heard a little bit of the dialogue up here. What do you think we'd do to solve this issue with a little bit of maybe input that we've given you thus far?
I think what we can do is bring it back to traffic committee, probably not the March meeting, but the one after. I don't think we should put speed humps out there as an option, it doesn't sound like it's going to fly, so maybe we don't waste our time on that. Bring forward a speed table option, and bring forward a closure option, which I don't, I don't know that staff is ever going to go for that anyways, because it's a nice route for police and fire, and everyone's just going to go to Maple if we do that. But like, but we as a staff spent a lot of time trying to figure out a solution for this, and came with what we thought was best. There's only so much I can do on the street to fix a problem. So I don't know that I'm going to have all these great, I'm not going to have three options, really. Like, the speed tables are really the only good one I can think of, and maybe striping the road. And like I said, I think that's a feel-good measure, but we could at least look at it.
Okay. Ms. Colo?
And that's not discounting the current option also, right? The best option might be what you already presented.
Right, yeah, we can bring that back out as well.
Okay. So do you need a motion on this one at all to send that back to traffic committee? Will we just move to send it back to traffic committee? Would that be appropriate closure to the item?
Yep.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, do you, I think we still need approval of the other elements of this.
Yes.
So just to move that along, I'll approve, I'll move approval of A, B, where are we? A, B, D, and E.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Douglas. We have a second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. Commissioner Hahn?
I did have a question for Miss Donahue on 6B. So the recommendation was to widen or re-stripe the center lane on 14 Mile, but it doesn't really necessarily address the issue with the safety of entering and exiting driveways. Now, is that just a peril of living on a busy street? Or do you think that that would, the re-stripe? living on a busy street? Or do you think that that would, the restriping would at least allow for slower traffic?
So the restriping will at least help in terms of safety, like, you can pause and wait to turn into your driveway. It doesn't solve congestion, right? Like, you live right next to Woodward, there's going to be traffic queues that back up. You know, they'd asked for a do not block driveway sign, but like, I can't put that at every single house, right? You only do that for big, really busy commercial driveways. So we didn't necessarily have a solution to that. I think it's just that's kind of where you live. But at least this center turn lane issue, we are solving a potential safety issue there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collo?
Ms. Donahue, also with 6B, you mentioned it briefly off the top, but do we need permission from Birmingham to make this improvement? Or is this, is this something we can do without them?
We do need them to say they are okay with it. I don't expect any pushback, as long as we're the ones doing the work. I think they'll be fine with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Leaves us with 6C. Commissioner Macy?
I move that we send 6C back to traffic committee.
Motion by Commissioner Macy. Sir Second. Second by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion. This very, you know, unsafe motion. Just kidding. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, Mr. Godeck, that's what you get for good work. You get more work and rework. Okay, that brings us to item eight on tonight's agenda, which is the amendment to the final planned unit development and site plan North Main Square LLC, which is 118 North Main Street, lead certification. Mr. Twing?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. This item was in front of you, the development itself, back in May of 2022, May 23rd, to be exact. It's the site of the former Main Art Theater site. You may recall that it's a mixed-use development that's being proposed there. It's a five-story building that includes retail space and restaurant space on the ground floor, office space on the third floor, or second floor, excuse me, and then residential on the third, fourth, and fifth floors. And the third floor might be flex space for more office, based on how it was approved. It also included some parking spaces on the ground floor under the building, as well as adjacent to it. Some of those were planned to be EV stationed, I believe about eight. And there were some solar panels planned for the roof. At your approval of that evening, you will see that we included a copy of the resolution. The item that's in front of you this evening is a request from the petitioner to modify item five. That's in regards to the building shall be lead certified. They can explain their issues for why they are proposing revisions to it. From the planning division's standpoint, any approval or requirement of approval or ordinance requirement has to be done before you get occupancy, no different than paving the parking lot, putting in the landscaping, anything else. So they're asking for a modification to that certification being obtained prior to occupancy. And so in the letter that they've provided, there are six protocols that they would like the commission to consider. You will see in the staff memo that the staff would like items three and four removed as they are not related to the lead certification and/or the PUD and/or the zoning ordinance. They're related to the building code and occupancy based on building code provisions and the need to have all life safety issues. So if you address the lead certification issue, everything else would just flow in a normal process. So we would recommend that items three and four simply be removed from that protocol. And then the last issue we raised in the letter was there is no mechanism to ensure that the building ever becomes lead certified, other than the petitioner pursuing that and obtaining it at some later date on their basis. Once we've granted occupancy to the building, there's very limited that we're going to be able to do to make it mandatory to be certified later. Again, the lead certification is a third-party certification that we're not involved in generally. So I guess I'll stop there with my overview and see if there's some questions.
Commissioner Dubak?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess, as I think the commissioner was really pressing on lead certification as a community benefit in this particular project, I want to make sure I'm understanding you saying that our usual tool for these kinds of requirements is that we wouldn't issue CFO until all criteria are met. So that's our usual course of business. Is that our, is that our only leverage? That's our only way to require that they meet this?
Well, we haven't had a project where it's had to be lead certified, meaning it's not an ordinance requirement anywhere in the city codes. It's a requirement the city commission put on their PUD amendment approval for this project. It's something you added to it. And there's no other mechanism listed in the approval that says it's got to be done. And in order for staff, the administration, to ensure that it's done, is the only way I can ensure it's done, is if it's done before we give them a CFO.
I guess my question is, there's nothing of your department, but is there something we can do, and it's an independent agreement that's somehow legally binding? Because I am not sympathetic to the request that we not have any penalty for not meeting this requirement, when I think it was one of the most compelling reasons that we approved this PUD. So what other levers could exist?
Very similarly, I'll point out one that's a little different, is the marijuana sites that came through and had approval, there were specific provisions in that ordinance and licensing about green and lead certification. So the Gatsby project is being similarly told, meaning all of their green activities have to be done before any one of the tenants can get into the building. All of the solar panels, all of the rain gardens, all of those things. Again, so it's a similar process of, to ensure that it's done is to get it before we let you in. The other way that we deal with some things is you can, on what I will call minor items, walls, some of the landscaping, even some paving under occasions, we've collected performance bond. And because you might not be able to put it in during the winter, in cases, you might not be able to complete something. And so we would get a performance bond. The issue I would say here in terms of what we have is trying to determine what the value of that performance bond might be. I can tell you that a wall costs X amount per foot, or something. We can get numbers on paving materials and things. I don't know what the value of a lead certified building is.
Okay. So there might be some information that we have pursued in order to have a resolution that both perhaps allows for the CFO before we get the certification, but also guarantees the lead certification. That is a resolution I'm willing, you know, to this, that I'm willing to consider. And yeah, with your recommendation that we, throughout three and four, I don't see how these are really relevant to the rest of the request. And I don't understand the rationale for that. But I am curious if anyone else has any ideas. But where I stand is that we are going to guarantee lead certification of this building as one of the primary community benefits of this project.
And I have looked at the City of Ann Arbor's development code, and they do have what I will call formula-based items in there, in terms of if they've given permission for a PUD that has more square footage than would normally be allowed. There's a formula based on how many points they've been told that the lead certification would be. And it's kind of complicated, but, so I won't go into it. But there's a way to drive a formula-driven penalty at the end, if that's what you're looking for, or to ensure compliance. But that would have to be added to this. You're going to have to tell me what the penalty is at the end of the day.
Okay. So that is an option on the table as well?
Certainly.
Okay. We just have to come up with reasonable parameters.
I think.
All right.
Real quick, just need a clarification before I get to Commissioner Douglas. So when you said that, you know, the building of these elements into the, into the project, I think you meant like the certification of them, right? I mean, we would see that, okay, yeah, they put solar panels in, yeah, they did this, but the, it's in the letter, or not in the letter, in our approval, that it was certification. And is that the thing? So it wouldn't be like, hey, I have all these elements, give me the CFO. It's, hey, show me your certificate that shows you have lead certification.
That's correct, because they will have solar panels on. That's easy to see in how many they'll have EV stations that they need to put in. Those will be there. It's the certification issue that I think is raising their concern.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas, and then Commissioner Collo.
Actually, it was a performance bond question that I was going to ask. I mean, I don't know how those work, but it does seem to me that that might be the tool for us to make sure that at the end of the day, they achieve the goal that we've wanted to achieve. And it's just a question of figuring out an dollar value for that.
Thank you, Ms. Rar. On that performance bond issue, I've seen other communities, you know, having done some research on this over the last week or so, let's say you need 100 points to get lead, could be 100 points, and you need 79 of them. If a developer hits 78, they're not going to be lead certified, right? Maybe there's just building footprint and, well, if you can't change, you can't change how they took care of the recycled materials early on. I mean, there's just some points you can never add back. If we were to take performance bond with this formula taken into account, maybe they can't hit lead. Like, maybe it comes down, they've done everything that's one point shy, 10, however many points shy. Would we refund, you know, I've seen where there's been communities where they will refund X amount. So if you come to 99% lead certified, you get 99% of the bond back, based on some sort of formula, right? Because there are some things we're going to ask them to go back and do when it comes to lead certification. And then, like I said, just some things, if you don't recycle the materials off the get-go of the building, that, you know, you could lose 5% that you'll never see again.
Well, again, we haven't used anything like that in the city for a look. I have seen the ordinance provision that the City of Ann Arbor has, and it's based on that fact. They require that lead buildings submit a plan of action ahead of time, and I might not be using the right term. But they require that before they get a building permit. Alls we required here for this project was that it actually applied to go through that process, because, again, we don't have ordinance anywhere near the complexity of the City of Ann Arbor's. But you're correct, in that if they wanted occupancy, they would pay a performance bond based on that formula I referenced that has a reference to the number of points they were supposed to get, how many they actually got, and where there is. So it's a fairly lengthy formula that's put together in there. But that's the only one I've seen.
Well, there's another issue with the formula too. Just sorry, and I'll let you continue, is that, you know, not every point costs the same, right? You know what I mean? Like, a solar panel might cost much different than a, you know, permeable pavement or something, or, well, I guess it would be in the building, like an insulated window, or a...
Yeah. And the points they don't get are something that I'm sure you'd want to keep, get the whole bond back. You would put the solar panel on, you would put the charging station. A point that might not be received is something inside the type of concrete mixture, some sort of major building system that was, for some reason, that they didn't get a point on. I'm not a lead expert, but that's my understanding of lead, is that they're missing some things there.
Commissioner Macy?
Okay, just, but you're talking about not going back in time, but they've known this whole time that they're going for lead certification. So is that the only example that you have about, sorry, can I ask him a question?
You're not supposed to talk to other communities. There's one exception, although you asked Commissioner Collo. Do you agree, Commissioner Collo?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
So you talk about, like, well, you can't go back in time, so if, like, they're starting from now, they may not get all the points. But they are going back in time. They've been starting from the beginning, seeking lead certification. So is there another example?
Yeah. I guess my understanding of the problem is that lead certification takes X amount of time to get after you're done. And they send out their inspectors and they do, you, they apparently have a checklist that we've not seen, but I'm sure that they would share that checklist with us at some point, and we know what they're going for. If the lead inspector has determined that they missed an item there, or, you know, as they're building it, it wasn't quite what lead standards are, right? Like, of course you have consultants when you do something. Of course, you try to do it the exact way you're supposed to. Sometimes you miss it. I personally think that they will build this to lead standard anyways. I think that this building is going to be built to lead standard. I think the bigger issue is getting the occupancy, like, the real problem for us is that the planning division did not want to issue a certificate of occupancy before the lead certification was complete, right? And that is a process that could take months after the building's done, which I think would be detrimental, right?
By far answered my question, and then gone on for five more minutes.
You don't want to give feedback to me, my friend.
No, I was just saying, I made a mistake. I'm not even saying. So it still feels like, you know, in that case, why would the city be to blame? It seems like the consultant should be to blame for that. So, okay, but I have some questions for you two. And so I think this has been touched on, but one of the things that we heard at public comment as a proposed solution that I don't know that someone said was the temporary certificate of occupancy, which they asked for, and then just holding that permanent one until the lead certification comes through. Is there a reason we can't do that?
We can do whatever process the city commission would like. I would say our normal process is allowing in a mixed-tenant building, a tenant to occupy a portion of the building as they go forward. There is no break in this resolution that says a portion of the building can be occupied or not. It says it needs to be lead certified. I don't know how you lead certify two floors of a building.
Yeah.
So, and then I just, sorry, everyone else seems to be sort of waving away this three and four and how they're not important. But I don't understand. We put these in here in the beginning, and why is it now that we suddenly want to get rid of them? I don't understand that part.
Well, the issuing of a temporary occupancy or a permit or a final occupancy permit has nothing to do with the zoning ordinance or the PUD. That's a building code requirement. And so to include it in this is inappropriate. The building code will issue a permit when it's ready, not prior, not before. When all life safety is done, you can get your building permit. So it's irrelevant to this discussion. And even if you included it, and let them argue that they're ready to move in, they're not going to get in until those life safety issues are ready. So it's inappropriate to be in this.
Am I looking at the wrong three and four? Commissioner Dubak, I'd love to hear from you. Yeah, I'm just going to pass all.
Commissioner Macy, here's my gavel. Commissioner Dubak, go ahead.
My reference to that, and agreeing with what I believe staff's recommendation is, is that we do not consider changes to those options as requested by the petitioner, that we are throwing them out as something we might consider waiving, and are sticking to the other items in their recommended changes. Is that correct? That's my understanding of your, so when I say I don't want to consider those, I mean, I don't want to consider any changes to those. I'm leaving those as they are and sticking with the CFO. And how do we get the guarantee of lead certification and perhaps consider issuing a CFO before it's finalized, because I understand the timeline issue. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Yeah, my, just for clarity, my recommendation is, I don't have any objections to what they're requesting, other than three and four need to be removed. And then I'd simply point it out, there's no remedy at the end, that if they don't obtain it, I'm going to be able to make them obtain it. So that's the staff recommendation. I don't have any objection to their proposal, other than removing three and four.
So, Mr. Twing, I think you said something that kind of piqued my mind, because we talked a little bit about the temporary occupancy, and you kind of mentioned, like, well, you know, is it, like, how do you tie it to, like, a percentage or whatever? I mean, is there, yeah, because I don't know how you, because the thought was, could you say, okay, well, you know, with a plan in place and the checklist in place and a consultant signing off that these elements will meet lead certification, and, you know, we're fine with it, could they get, like, a, not more than 25 or 50 percent? Because the building's not viable unless it gets fully booked up. So there's that incentive, and they're going to have a time before people move in, you know? and they're going to have a time before people move in, you know what I mean? Whether that's six months, eight months, a year, hopefully not longer.
If you accept their proposal, we'll let their tenants move in as their space is ready to move in. The only point we'll look for the LEED certification to come in is at the end, as they propose, which could be eight months after it's all done, which could be two years from now. And then if it's not provided, Paul's, the city's remedy is, under this proposal, is to grant extensions.
But what if we did a temporary?
We would do a temporary for any part of the building, because I don't need to prove it's LEED certified until the end.
Right. But then if it expired, let's say, say, one year from, you know, when they need it, which gives them a year to get the certification, and if at the end of that year, they did not meet LEED certification, or they failed to comply, then what is the, then that, then everyone has to get kicked out? I mean, what's our leverage to...
To kick someone out?
Well, I mean, like, put a, you know, it's, you put a sticker on the door that says, hey, you know, this place has been not condemned, but, you know, no longer has a certificate of occupancy, please vacate.
Again, the LEED certification isn't a building code requirement, it's a zoning requirement, so the only enforcements I'm going to have are under the zoning requirement, and I could cite you for violating your, your agreement and your PUD, but those are minimal fines on a, on a basis. I don't believe the city attorney would want us to try and start kicking people out of a spot we already said you can move into.
I mean, the city attorney wouldn't want that, but I don't know what the commission thinks.
I, Mayor, I, I know the temporary certificate of occupancy has been floated, but I, I think you have identified this issue that I've been thinking about, about if they never get it. You just can't simply revoke a temporary certificate of occupancy when you have tenants already in the building. That's, you've lost that leverage.
Right.
Once that is issued. Yeah, I've seen other communities attempt to do it and get burnt by it. I, it's not something I would recommend in this case, because we don't know if they'll get the LEED certification, even if we've granted extensions, and if they don't get it, you're in that conundrum, and, and it'll be a very difficult problem to sort, to try to fix at that point.
Go with, Commissioner Hunt?
Mr. Lael kind of touched on what I was going to ask about, because presumably temporary licenses or temporary occupancy licenses can be renewed, and renewed pretty much indefinitely is that, right? So even if they don't end up a year, two years from now, getting that LEED certification, this could just continue to renew, and they can continue to stay in indefinitely, unless the city has something in place that cuts it off after a certain...
Well, and I, I guess a little bit, the temporary that they're asking for, for the office tenant in this letter, is a temporary, because the rest of the building interior isn't done, it's not even going to be closed. So what the life safety is there is make a whole bunch of other things, but you get a temporary to occupy that space, because you're in a building that isn't finished. Once they finish the rest of the building, if the LEED is out of the way, there's no reason you won't get a final CFO.
Other than the LEED certification.
Yeah, the building's done, other than proving it's LEED certified.
Mr. Prush?
It, it seems to me, after this discussion about temporary certificate of occupancy versus permanent, so on and so forth, and the difficulties with that whole structure, it seems to me that the performance bond issue is really the only solution that we can look at, that, that seems viable. How you calculate that, and, and that is obviously going to be problematic, because we've never done it before, but I think there are some variables that you can use for other applications, which probably will help you put together, you know, a proposed, a performance bond. But it seems to me that this whole issue of temporary certificate of occupancy versus permanent, this section versus that section, it's going to be a mess, it's going to be a huge mess. And so, to my thinking, based upon what we've all talked about so far, performance bond is really the only way to go. And, and that's going to be negotiating, and we haven't heard from the petitioners yet, but that would be a negotiating position for us. You know, if you want some relief from the LEED certification requirement, then let's talk performance bond, to make sure, some kind of financial guarantee that you actually achieve that. So that's, that's my thoughts right now.
Commissioner Duba?
Actually, I think that's a good point to perhaps hear from the petitioner on himself for now.
Okay. Yeah, I'd agree. But just, Mr. Twing, the clarity, it would be possible to do a temporary occupancy for, say, not say more than 20% of the building for the office tenant that wants to move in, and then you still have 80% leverage for the rest of the building, that we would not offer a CFO for the rest of the 80% until they got the LEED certification. That is an option?
I think you can negotiate anything you need to under a PUD, but I think then to do that, you're getting a little more back into the development agreement.
Sure, sure.
And, yes, you could do something, but I'm not sure that's the most expeditious way to go.
Gotcha. Okay. I know we have the petitioner here tonight.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Jordan Jonah with AF Jones Development, developer of the, the main of Royal Oak. Also, I had with, with me is Dennis Cowan, Plunka Cooney, and also Jason Jakir from Tower Construction. And I would like to dive in a little bit of the LEED certification process and what it is and what it takes to become a LEED certified building. And we've learned this throughout the process of getting, doing this development, and it really is a journey, and it does start from the beginning. It even starts with the demo of the building, on how you take down a demo and recycle certain products. And we have taken the steps necessary from the beginning in order to do a LEED certified building. We are on a track, we are on the track to do a, to, to receive a LEED certified building here. It's our intent to be there, and we've hired a good consultant, a very reputable consultant that is guiding us through this process. It's not as clear as just submit and you got it. There's a lot of steps and process. And hopefully, one day, I, I would hope that the LEED certification goes away, and this is just a standard of way of building a product. But as Mr. Woody said earlier, this is typical of a LEED certified project. The building, you apply, you have a checklist and the certain points that you go for, and the building has to be in commission before the, when you apply for the final stages of the certificate. I can assure you, and we can share with you, all of the LEED points we are going for, we're actually going for more than what we are anticipating for, for the certificate here, and we're happy to share this with you. We're happy to show you exactly what it takes, because it starts from the beginning, not at the end. We can show you what points, where we're spending a ton of equity into this project in order to make it work. It can't be done on the backend, it has to be done on the frontend, and we're happy to share with you the points that we are going for. Unfortunately, this is the process of how LEED certification works. After the building is commissioned, then they come out and do the certification. We have all the backup, we could show you exactly where our points are, what points we're going after, and how we are going to establish that certificate. Unfortunately, this is how LEED buildings are commissioned. It's not as simple as gray and white, here's what we did, you get a certificate wait day one. It does take time, it does take efforts from us, from the city, of course, and also the LEED certification that we're going for. They, they come out and they test, they look, they see, and these things could be looked at beforehand, too. We have no problem sharing with you guys exactly how we are going for a LEED certificate, for LEED certification for this building. It's not the intent to say we're not going to get it at the end. We have worked very hard, very diligently, from the beginning of the process, in order to get the certificate here. And we're going to be proud of the certificate at the end of the day. There is a time issue for, for the certificate. As soon as it's commissioned, we would like to use the building. We think it's wrong and shameful for a building to sit there for eight to 12 months with no one using a building, because we're waiting for a certificate, that we believe we are, we've achieved already. It's not typical, that is not typical how a LEED certification works. We're happy to discuss more with you, but please know, and we're happy to share with, with you, the point system that we're going for, and where we are, believe we are getting all the points, we're actually going for 15% extra, just as a cushion to get this. Unfortunately, it's a timing issue, and this is how the LEED certification works. It was not clarified at the approval process, which I believe should be, because this is one of the first LEED certified, LEED certified buildings in the city, which we're going to be proud to present here. Unfortunately, this is just how the process works. We would just like clarity, for everyone's sake, that here's where we're at, this is what we're doing. This is the process, and here's typically how a LEED certification will work. It does take a long time after the building is commissioned, in order to get this process, the certificate. I'm, I'm happy to discuss any, any way of working around this, but of course, I don't believe anyone would want a building sitting completely vacant, for no particular reason other than a certificate that is trying to be achieved, that has been effortlessly gone and thought after for this project. I don't believe that's anyone's intent, it's not our intent, and we're happy to discuss however we can achieve this with, with the city, and, but please know, I, I've heard some public comments, that that is not the intent to move away from a LEED certified building, and we can actually prove that upfront, on where and how and what it is, and it's fairly typical in that sense. And there is a lot of upfront costs, not just the backend cost, on how this LEED certification works. So I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns, and go from there.
Commissioner Duba?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Jonah. And to be clear, I believe you're moving forward in good faith. You know, we've heard, we have documentation from your consultant that's helping build your LEED strategy and help you get toward LEED certification. I think the one thing that's given me pause, because I'm willing to work on the CFO, but recognizing that occupancy is our one real lever here, as we've discussed at length, and then your councils request that we enact no accountability measure should the building never become LEED certified, that, I think, is what's causing a lot of consternation. So I wonder if you could speak to that request and why that might be necessary?
So if we, from the beginning, it is a journey for a LEED certified building, from the demolition to the point of occupancy. It is how you construct a building, how you reuse materials, how you even demo a building, in different stages. It's a big issue with LEED certification, which we found out was with mechanical systems in the building, efficiency units. And we're doing all the steps that we could possibly do for this building. Fortunately, and we don't anticipate this, if it did fall short, we are sitting at a building here that's, if it's never going to happen, if it's not possible at this point to actually certify a building, what is the remedification? Take down the whole building? I, I don't see that as a plausible, I don't think anyone would want to just demo a brand-new building, and believe me, this is not our intent, and where we're going with this is a landmark project for the city and for us, and what we want to achieve here. It's a difficult one to measure on how and what. I'm happy to, of course, if it's a temporary certificate of occupancy and work to a final occupancy, we completely understand that. It's happened all, it's pretty typical, and it has, there are a lot of stages in occupancy. A building may sit, as you have a few in, in Royal Oak that will sit with a dirt floor, until a lease is actually signed, until something is done to the building. It is stages. Fortunately, that's just the real estate world and the business we live in. If, you're not going to build something before you have someone that actually leased the building from us. But there are multiple steps, and I, we are doing the best of our ability to achieve this LEED certification. I couldn't say on where and how, where it falls, on who and what would be actually commissioning the building and giving us a certificate, but I can tell you that this is what we're doing. Here's, here's our steps, here's our process, here is our, our representation from our, our, our consultant, and if the city had a consultant too that would want to review this and say, hey, this is the best, this is the best that this building can do, especially with a zero lot line site that doesn't have site work actually to be done onsite, I, I'm happy, we're, we're an open book to show you, show the city exactly what we're doing. It is a big process, it is something that we're achieving. It is best efforts in these cases. I could, I can't tell you exactly how it's going to fall with points, because it's a certification from, it's not a black and white, here's, here's an actual point, it's a, it, it goes to a council that reviews it and sees how, what you've done, and that's the point system that's created. It is our intent to get a certification, and we've come this far, I'm, I'm determined at this point, of course, and I just think there needs to be a discussion on how and what our, this building could achieve, the occupancies that, that would be needed, and also the certificates. And it's a work in progress, it's a partnership between everyone to, to do a building like this, it's a very big undertaking, and this is something that we're very proud of. And how it will fall, I couldn't tell you exactly. I could tell you that we're, we're doing the best of our ability here, and I'm happy to show every single point we're going for, and all the extras that go into a LEED certification building, it is a learning process for us, and I imagine for the city, because this issue has not came up before, because if it has, it would have been discussed a long time ago, of course. Open to suggestions and comments, a performance bond has been put out there, please know that this is already a very, very big endeavor for, for us to do this building and to put a LEED certification on top. It's, it's a big endeavor, but we're happy to show you everything that we're going for. It's not the intent just to walk away from a LEED certification, especially this far into the process, so...
Understood. I, I think we got, you know, clarity from, from your consultant about the length of the process, and that certainly it is longer than it would be necessary for you to get people in the building, and I understand why you want to get an occupant in there sooner than you might get the certification. I guess my question to you is, if allowing for the CFO to be issued before LEED certification is contingent on us enacting some sort of accountability measure to ensure that LEED certification happens, is that something that you are amenable to?
Can I? Yes, please, Dennis.
Let me jump in since I'm the evil council that suggested it would be a penalty. Let's look at the big picture here. You asked for community benefits, you also have a climate change plan, so from a public policy viewpoint, you want this to be a LEED certified building, and Mr. Jonah has indicated that he'll share with you the points, you're going to see it in the review of the building plans, you can come see it when it's built, but the reality is, the way LEEDs works with the U.S. Green Building Council, you have to have the building completed and operational, and there's very good reason for that. They want to make sure that the solar panels just aren't window dressing. Are they actually connected? Are they working in the units? I mean, they go through the whole process, they don't just, you know, check to see, you know, check some boxes, they make sure everything is operational. So in essence, you have a building that is completed and occupied. But from a public policy viewpoint, you're trying to encourage this activity, and if you penalize it, I argue that you're discouraging it, because then people will say, well, why am I going to spend all this money? And if I fall short a couple points or whatever, then I get this big penalty for it. So I've seen ordinances, some do have a bond, and most of those who have a bond have the formula that you talked about, Commissioner Colo, where, let's say, you were shooting for 40 points and you got 30, then you would get back, you know, 75% of the bond, so that encourages positive activity. I've also seen some ordinances that have absolutely no penalty, because at the end of the day, the community gets the benefit of the bargain, which is that you would take the actions necessary to get the LEED certification, and spend the money, the most importantly, put in those features and take those actions. So, you know, the risk is with the project and with North Main Square, they're the ones with all the risk. There's no risk on the city's part, what's, what's the risk? There is not any risk on your part. They're going to build it, they're going to prove that they built it. What we're talking about is a piece of paper that is meaningful, I will not doubt that, but that from a public policy viewpoint, you're going to have the benefit of the bargain and the benefit of what he said, even if they were to fall short a few points. And the way this all came up is because we got the letter from the Planning Division, this was not discussed, the issue about, when is the certificate of occupancy going to be discussed, when we went to the planning commissioner here. went to the planning commissioner here. And I think we made it clear when we had that meeting that the office component, because we have a tenant who needs to move into the building, so they, because we're trying to segue from them moving out of their building and a deadline into this building, that the temporary certificate of occupancy became an important issue. And as you know, in a big mixed-use building, you have staged occupancy. You don't have it all happen at once, like even Henry Ford didn't occupy every floor on the same day. They staged it. Every mixed-use project does that. So my argument is, from a public policy viewpoint, if you want to encourage this type of activity and have people do it, you can identify and have the accountability on the front end. We'll share the checklist. When the building is completed, you can come in and inspect to make sure everything has been done, that we said was going to be done, and then we'll move forward. And I think we'll, by every indication from a consultant, we're going to end up with the points. If for some reason we don't, then we just don't want to suffer a penalty for it because we've expended the money and we did, and we said, we did what we said we were going to do, it was just that, you know, we don't control the U.S. Green Building Council. When you, generally when you issue performance bond, as Commissioner Prush pointed out, those are all things under your control. You're going to put in the sidewalk, let's say you have the performance bond for outside landscaping and you can't do it in the winter time, and so the sidewalk, the landscaping, the lighting, all those types of things are done at a later date. You can control all that. At the end of the day, as we've gone through this process, we can't totally control the U.S. Building Council, Green Building Council. So that's the reason for, on a public policy basis, at least my argument, that you'll encourage this activity more if you don't seek a penalty.
So I'm going to answer your question, I'm going to let my colleagues get in here. As far as from a public policy standpoint, and what risk does the city bear? I would say two things. One, when we talk about a PUD and the restrictions and the different elements we put into an agreement, to say this is something really, really important to us, on which certainly at least, you know, some portion of the decision was made for us to then not ensure that it happens, I think weakens our authority for future petitioners. And secondly, weakens the faith that the residents have when they hear us championing something that is a clear priority for our residents and aligned with our regularly espoused values for us then just to back away from it. I would say those are very large risks to us as a city. So again, the timing issue, I think everyone understands, for the CFO. I think what I'm looking for, and I think others are looking for, is how do we allow for occupancy but still have a guarantee of accountability around LEED certification?
Okay. We'll go with Commissioner Douglas and then Commissioner Collo.
At our last planning commission meeting, we had a building proposed that was going to be a net-zero energy building. And we had an extensive discussion about, and I see Mr. Gantina back there smiling at me, we had an extensive discussion about, well, what if this building doesn't achieve net-zero energy? And the case I made, and that's the case I'll make here, is that it was to that developer's advantage to achieve net zero, and it is to this developer's advantage to achieve energy efficiency. And our goal as leaders, as policymakers, is to deliver the energy-saving benefits, the greenhouse gas reduction benefits that come with these efforts. And if we see that and monitor their process and see that they are implementing the steps that will achieve those public policy goals, then we will have benefited the city of the people of Royal Oak. And whether or not they finally show up with a piece of paper that certifies that they're, you know, within two points or three points of achieving those goals, we still have delivered the benefits that the people of Royal Oak want. And so long as we establish a process, working with the community development department, monitoring the elements of, as you've offered, monitoring the elements of their plan to make sure they are delivering those components that give us the benefits we want, I would be satisfied that we have given the people of Royal Oak what we promised.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I remember when I first showed up in the commission, we're approving PUDs and like, what's your community benefit? The community benefit was, oh, we're bringing more people into town. It's like, okay, well, PUD granted, right? And because we had looked for a long time to have a community benefits package, and that's something that did take quite a while to get, and we finally have one now, right? We do have a list of items, things that you can do to enhance our community, and in return, we will enter into this contract with you. This is one of the last PUDs that was approved before that checklist came out, yet it hits so many of them, right? Like, we have the art, we have the public art, we have the table housing for veterans and veterans assistance, which was a huge benefit, right? Right in our downtown. And we had, you know, the LEED certification and a whole laundry list of other things. I think the problem that we're seeing here tonight isn't that someone's not coming to us saying we don't want to get LEED certified, they're coming to us saying we want to move into the building before it's done. And we have this contingency, but no one really thought through to the next step, right? When we had enacted this, because we didn't have the community benefits package yet, we had never envisioned what would happen if we wanted to grant someone a temporary zero before we actually got to the point of having a LEED certification. Which, by the way, includes a plaque and a nice old glass statue also, it's not just a piece of paper.
Oh.
That's an expensive plaque.
Yeah. Made of recycled plastic, I think. But so I think refining the issue, you know, no one really could see that this is going to be an issue when we entered into the agreement, but now it is, clearly. You know, I think, I think we all agree, we want the building occupied as soon as possible. It's better for our downtown not to have a big empty building. So I think we should look at how we can get to making sure that they can occupy, but also making sure that it is, I mean, we do have a contract, I agree with that, I think I've heard about this, that we do want to get to LEED certification. And that is, you know, we do want to hold our developers to that, it is agreement we all entered into and that's what we thought we'd get. So I guess my question to the petitioner, you know, you've heard a lot about bonds here tonight, you know, can, you know, and I think maybe between the commissioner and the city manager here, you know, I'm not sure going to solve this right now, but what could you, what you think is something that could be offered to assure us that, you know, you are beyond, you know, your word, that you think would be able to assure us that you are working towards that LEED certification? And if you don't get it, that there is some sort of verification, right? Is, you know, is that performance bond, is that something like the Ann Arbor program that we could develop between us, you know, the city and you guys?
Yes, if we could work with the planning department and figure out a reasonable bond, we're open to discussion about it with them. There is more to go into, it's, as Mr. Twing said, it's not just as simple as just, here's the cost of a wall. There are different elements at different points, it's kind of different, difficult to establish a certain number. It really is a good faith effort on both parts and working together to establish the LEED certification for this building. I'm happy to do that, if I may suggest, if we could do that through the planning department and come up with a certain dollar monetary value on that bond, we're happy to discuss it with them, of course. It's not our, not our intent to walk away from this by any means.
And I think maybe even to add to that, what might be helpful is, you know, you have your plan, right? You just didn't say, hey, we'll LEED certify, we'll wing it. So you have your plan, you have the elements that you plan to do, you have your consultant that sort of put their stamp on it, a reputable consultant, right? Maybe it's a combination where, as we go through the process, you know, we can check to say, okay, you know, if you, during demo, like, did you do these things? And not that we're the auditor or the lead, maybe the demo one's a little harder, but we would definitely, when it comes to mechanical inspection, we can just validate, yep, these are the systems that they said they were going to put in specifically. And if we get to all those elements, you know, by the time the building is, you know, approved for safety and occupancy, so it's saying, okay, does this, like, give you a mechanical example, our inspectors are going to check, whatever furnace you put in there, they're going to check that it works and that it meets safety guidelines, right? But is there a check to say, yep, this is the furnace that they promised they were going to put in there, this is the HVAC they promised they were going to put in there in their LEED plan that was certified by the consultant? I don't want to put work on our planning department or our building department, but if it's a, you know, five-minute little check on these elements, coupled with some sort of performance bond that says, hey, for whatever reason, you know, yeah, all the solar panels are there, but then they don't work, or the LEED people come back and say, what were you thinking? You get like 1% power out of these or something like that, then there's a little, like, you know, just insurance there on the backend. But I don't want to create work for our staff, but if there's a, you know, idea that you guys can come up with that might even, you know, keep us on track to, when we get to that occupancy, if that list isn't, you know, somehow validated to some extent, coupled with, I think, some sort of, you know, because we're not experts in any of this, so I think there still needs to be a little bit of insurance there just in case, but to be fair to the public. I trust you guys, but we, you know.
We're fine with that, we're fine submitting our plan and showing you the point systems and what we're going for and the units that are spec for the building that meet the point requirements and the LEED certification, we're fine with all of that. Of course, it's not our intent, it's more just a technical thing on how and what and when.
And if you're overshooting at 15% over, I mean, really shrinking that likelihood of something, but you are, it's the first time you're doing it too.
It's not, we do have a reputable consultant that's very reputable in the business that can vouch for everything that we are doing, and I believe if we could submit the plan, no, we're fine with all this. There.
And maybe there's a small, you know, I don't know, I have lots of ideas, but, you know, I don't know if we have a consultant that you guys could pay for just to validate those assumptions, you know what I mean? That, yep, this math will get us to the points, probably wouldn't cost much. And, you know, if we picked a consultant to verify that, you know, that might be another thing to add a little bit of extra confidence. But just throwing ideas out there, guys, I'm done brainstorming, what do you want to do?
Commissioner Collo?
So I guess, you know, Mr. Break, you've heard a lot of discussion here for the developer, you've heard the planning division. I think the intent of the commission at this point is to, reading the table, is to have some occupancy but also have a LEED certification. Is this something that you think, within your departments, we can figure out a plan for?
Yes. Okay.
Oh, well then, okay, then we're done.
Can I please, do you want to? I mean, in general, I don't feel of any use, but tonight especially, I feel less.
Do you care if all the words we've seen and stuff too, we'll just all go home?
Now, look, I think we can come up with something, it's, we're not only talking this issue specific, but we do want to encourage this in the future. We don't want this to be onerous. So I think there's, Mr. Leal and myself were taking a quick look at what Ann Arbor's doing, and I think that's a good basis. And in fact, when I was out in Tucson, I had this very conversation with the economic development staff there. So there's other resources, we're not the only ones.
Yeah, for sure.
So I think we need to come up with some guardrails, but I think if we come up with an understanding and then as we incorporate the adjustments into the master plan, this will be baked into the system. So we're not struggling with this in each and every time. There, from my understanding, there is another building that's further ahead that was not asked for LEED certification but is pursuing that in the community. So this will not be the first one. So I think there's some lessons that we can learn. But part of what the developer needed to hear is that in terms of, that they're trying to put together the financial arrangements and demonstrating that the commitment that we're willing to work with them. I think there's a solution. Will it be an easy one? I don't want to mislead you, but I think there's something that we can come up with that would be agreeable, that we could set the parameters, like I said, for future regulations.
So then also, you know, I would assume that that could probably be administrative here because it's remaining to the heart of the contract, if we're not taking out, they will eventually get LEED certified, that this could be something that you can work out administratively.
Interesting question.
Maybe.
Well, you still have the condition that the planning division has with respect to the building being LEED certified tied to the certificate of occupancy, what we, what Paul and I and planning division are looking at is coming up with, to add to that, to be able to get the flexibility for the certificate of occupancy while the LEED certification is going through the process and failure to do that, that there is some type of, and I hate to use the word penalty, but that's what the city of Ann Arbor uses.
Incentive to perform.
An incentive to perform, yes. Thank you. And I think that that might get us to where we need, but that would require an amendment of the PUD.
Right. So what I hear tonight is, okay, we took aggressive action as a community to move forward with our SCAP, we've done a lot of great work, we put together a community benefits list that even prior to that list really going into effect, these petitioners came up and said, hey, we want to, you know, do these things, we want the building to be LEED certified. Even though our list, I don't think, says you have to be LEED certified, it just says, what are your environmental, you know, elements that you're putting in for either net zero or for whatever? LEED is the common standard practiced, you know, official way, I guess, of really hitting the high mark. So we have someone that says that they came in, they agreed to do it, and they identified an issue in the process, because it's the first time doing it, it's kind of our first time doing it. And so I think what we need to do is just use this as a test case, sorry, you guys got to be the guinea pig, and figure out what the right answer is, because we don't want to disincentivize it, we don't want to make it an onerous process. At the end of the day, if somebody agrees to build a LEED building, we want a LEED building, we don't want to make it a painful process to get there, because that doesn't help us achieve our goals that we want to achieve as a community. So I think, I don't know, I mean, I drive by every day, drop my daughter off at school, and I see a lot of sand up right now. You know, I don't know if we have, you know, a week or two to kind of figure this out and, you know, go back, look at Ann Arbor, look at Tucson, look at, you know, even making Royal Oak's version of it that's a little simpler, and, you know, not penalize these guys for trying to, you know, run a business, because ultimately, if we have the confidence and we believe that they're going to get to that LEED and they're telling us they're going to get there, you know, let's give them the fairest and best shot of getting there and with a little bit of incentive to perform.
Commissioner Douglas and then Commissioner Hunt.
Yes, so do we need, does the city commission need to take action to allow staged occupancy? Or so was this just an informative discussion, Mr. Twing?
So for the staged occupancy, no, there's no action that's needed to be taken. If you were just going to approve the council's recommendation, you know, that would be an option. So I would say, that's why I was looking at Mr. Twing, if there should be some action of either tabling or asking us to come up with a solution. I think time is of the essence, but, you know, we want to do this right the first time, so.
Right. Potentially what would benefit me in making sure that the LEED certification item is no longer the main issue of getting them occupancy, as I said earlier, I don't have any issue of you adopted their protocol, subtracting three and four, and simply indicating at the end, telling staff to come up with a mechanism for the penalty that, so that clears the deck for me of your resolution that says this has to be LEED certified before they get in.
And we have no objection to that, we just wanted to make sure everybody understood the staged occupancy concept so there was no confusion later on, so we can eliminate that. And quite frankly, I think we can avoid doing an amendment to the PUD because if we amend the approval, those were all conditions, and not all those conditions were in the PUD. And I would prefer, if we can find a way, not to have to go back to three or four parties who have to sign this. So I think we can figure out a way to do that, as amending the approval is, as Mr. Twing has said, and with that protocol and take out three and four.
And we're fine working with the planning department and the department's here to come up with a reasonable, and if we didn't, we'll be back here.
Yeah, I think your input's important too, right? Because you bring a unique perspective that we can't get out of other ordinances and that we can't get just being a city. I mean, you guys are the ones dealing with the journey and the pain every day, you know. I mean, ultimately, it sounds like we want the same thing, and, you know, we appreciate your leadership going to even overshooting this LEED target. I mean, that's, that's an important thing to recognize, how do we do it in practicality, though?
So we're happy working with the departments, the planning department, and we're happy taking out three and four and moving forward and getting this building done, if everyone's on agree with that.
So I think I, Commissioner Hunt, and then Commissioner Macy.
So I understand that Mr. Leal and Mr. Break are going to go back and, you know, take a look at other cities that have done this in the past. I know it's a novel issue. I know it's a novel issue here in the city of Royal Oak. I just wanted to know, are you going to bring it back to us at some point? The processes that's being put into place just to make sure this isn't getting lost in?
Oh, absolutely.
We understand what those processes are. Because I fully understand and believe that they're building this building to lead certification, but I want to make sure that it's not getting stuck here. And, you know, that at least the processes are being put into place to move this along and, you know, get them occupied while continuing to get the lead certification.
I would say make that directive and we will bring that back.
I can make that motion.
Motion by?
Within two weeks.
Yeah, next meeting?
That's next meeting.
Yeah.
The 13th meeting, March 13th?
I would feel much more comfortable with that, the next meeting, that's tight with, we have some significant topics that are coming up, so.
Okay. So Commissioner Hunt, by March, you said 13th? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Hunt. Just a second. Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion?
So I think this was, that was going to be the same thing I was going to ask too, is if we're going to see it again. It started to sound at this table like we were just setting it off and saying, good luck. And I wanted to make sure it was going to come back here. I think we're a little bit on a spectrum here on how much we definitely, definitely want to see the lead certification and how much we're happy with the best effort. And so I think it's something that needs to be discussed up here again in terms of the agreement that we come to and the policy we have on it going forward.
And I think to Commissioner Hunt's point, the only thing that I want to make sure is that it's not specific to the project, that whatever we do is replicable, that we take this opportunity to create something that the next one that comes in front of us, we have this nut cracked, this problem solved. Commissioner Macy?
So I do want to see it for this project. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Are we saying it's not going to be seen?
No, no, no. Whatever process that we do to solve this issue is something that isn't just like unique, like a one-off. That it's something that we can have. So when the next one comes up, we don't, we're not back up here trying to figure it out for the next petitioner.
Okay, I got you.
Not a cast, but a mold.
That's right. There you go.
Be done for the night.
All right, any other discussion? I think it's a good motion. Call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, so basically, we just punted a little bit and said staff come up with a solution for you that will work for the development community and for our city to solve this issue with occupancy and lead certification delays and timing and all of that. So we'll be back here in March to vote on it, to make sure that.
So what we'll do is we'll wind down this protocol. I'll send you a copy, at least I'll take out three and four and adding in the checklist, and you can work with it how you wish. And then we'll also work on making some suggestions on the bond because we've also looked at some of the different ordinances. One of them, I'm not going to tell you which community. First of all, it's a penalty bond, totally penalty, and it's calculus that is way beyond my skill level, and I would encourage you not to do that. Because if we can't understand it, we can't pay it.
And I think Commissioner Collo made the point too, is like, and Mr. Jonny did too, we don't want you, we want this building inhabited and occupied, you know, as quickly. I mean, that's why, you know, we do these projects for the benefit of the community and to keep people in town and to attract new residents and employers and such. And so, you know, we just want to, because what we do with you is going to set the tone for everybody else that enters this issue. So we want to make sure we're not getting it right just for you. We're getting it right for every other petitioner that comes in front of us.
And we need to get it occupied so we can put that mural on the side of the building.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right, this brings us to item nine, which is the approval to establish parking rate for Winter Blast Festival.
All right, and thank you, Mayor Fournier and members of the city commission. This is brought forward that is an element of the agreement on the Winter Blast that addressing parking. Who initiated this was Chief Moore that noted that festival goers that would go to the parking garages upon leaving that the stacking of cars and taking a considerable amount of time that are trying to leave the parking garage. So the thought is, is to establish working with ParkRight to have a fee upon admission, than simply just having the gate up when individuals leave. There are costs that are associated with, that many of the parking spaces are taking offline on lots as well as on street parking to make up for those costs. This is not payable to MPS. They have waived that. But nevertheless, there are still costs that we have that are requirements of the auto parking fund. So what was contemplated, that was included into the agreement, that we can charge up to $10. That's the recommendation that I'm making to you this evening, that we can make this a better experience for the festival goers that are using the parking garages, that they can exit promptly as opposed to worrying about pulling over their car, going to the pay station, since the volume of individuals is greater than just a normal, ordinary day. And this pertains to the 11-mile parking garage as well as Center Street. We do have ParkRight that is available and can have the ticket takers that can receive payments and gear the garage accordingly. So that's the proposal that's before you. And there's a resolution to implement that is presented for your consideration.
Questions for Mr. Break?
Commissioner Purush.
What happens to the people who are going to the Henry Ford on that Friday, on the 17th, who are not going to the festival and usually would not pay $10 to park in the structure?
No, so we would be making arrangement, the parking division and the police department would be reaching out with Henry Ford to give vouchers or some sort of system. So no, that would not be for all individuals. There's also a provision in the contract that, working with John Woodson Associates, that we have to provide 300 vouchers. That's spelled out as part of the agreement. So there's going to be a variety of individuals. They're potentially taking into consideration people who work downtown that would normally park there. So that burden is, and that's where you need to roll pretty quickly here to make those appropriate arrangements. But that has been done previously through Arts Beats and Eats, and it would be the same system. And that the parking division is, feels pretty confident that they can accommodate.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Duba?
So I understand the contract allows for up to 10. I'm just curious how we would come up with that figure of 10. My guesstimation for most people staying at Winter Blast probably stay three to four hours, which means we were yielding maybe a buck, 50, two bucks per person staying in the deck after two hours free. So that is a substantial increase. And I'm also curious about the wisdom of this, given our current parking.
Okay. So here's what you need to take into consideration. We're taking 234 parking spaces offline. And some of those parking spaces will be over a period of six days for the staging and deconstruction. And other parking areas will be taken offline in a different point in time. So if you look at the revenue model, that assuming we charge other places, like for instance, for restaurants, that they occupy space, it's $25 per meter per day. And so calculating that out, plus the hard costs associated with ParkRight, it's at a figure of about $31,000 that of costs we incur and loss of revenues. So what I proposed in here is that in the agreement, it says that after the net revenues pays for other related costs of providing this festival. Nowhere does it say, what do you mean by net revenues? That is not defined in that agreement. The auto parking fund, we have debt obligations. We have to pay a debt bond of $800,000. And so this is the cost of doing business. If you want to set it at a lower amount, in my opinion, this would satisfy our cost, hard costs and loss of revenue that we are going to incur over this period of time. And the number of people that will be attending, the promoter can probably give us somewhat of an estimate. But this will reasonably assure that we will make up for those expenses and the lost revenue.
I think it more than reasonably assures if we're expecting another attendance of 80,000 to 100,000 people over the period of the festival, and the number of them likely to park in the garage. It sounds like we would far exceed any financial burden on the city. That's on top of the fact that we all know, everyone's very well aware, this system is generating much more money because of the very aggressive system that we've employed that we are trying to fix right now for being overly aggressive.
Yeah, so those dollars that you're referring to is coming into the general fund, not into the auto parking fund.
That's through tickets, absolutely. But our understanding is compliance is also up, which means the meters themselves are also making more money.
So we'll talk about that during the budget process. I'm just trying to put us in a financial position that it's not as rosy as you're making that out to be. That on one half of it, yes, there is some money coming in, but the auto parking fund, this is something that could help that arrangement. And so we do have that available. And the contract went through the calculations based on the lost revenue and what are fixed costs that are associated with that. And that's the recommendation that I'm making.
So I'm willing, I think that this, my gut, because there was no actual financial data included with our staff letter, is that this would yield far much more than we need to recoup our lost costs. I also don't want it to be punitive for folks to come down. The whole point of Winter Blast is for people to come down, enjoy our downtown, you know, create some livelihood and much slower winter season. I don't want to create a disincentive to that, have a, pardon, a much larger parking fee than folks would have been expecting last week if they were planning to come to Winter Blast. Which there was, this wasn't brought, we were supposed to have the festival two weeks ago, and this wasn't even brought up. This came after the fact, and we were already going to have the festival. So that timing is a little uncomfortable for me too. So, but I do appreciate, I think more so than any other point, is the bottleneck of folks trying to get out. That paying out entry is probably much more efficient, and that's convenient for our visitors. And so I think I'm comfortable with $5, because I think if we're actually making change there, that's probably going to slow down entrance, and people are, we're going to have people lined up outside the deck trying to get in as we're making change.
That's fair. And to respond to that, that we can monitor the number of people that come in and we can revisit that because we will have a basis of comparison.
So I would recommend five, but.
So I have a question real quick, guys. I just want to get this out, since we're talking about the financials real quick. And again, I appreciate the queuing issue, and we've had discussions about working with ParkRight and changing the whole model that we've seen work in other areas, and we got to talk to them about it. But this might be a good test case. The challenge I have is when you say like, we're going to take so many meters offline, you know, during that time. I don't know that we lose that revenue. I think it just gets shifted to other parking spots that are open. You know what I mean? So I don't know that that should be part of the equation in terms of the financial elements of it. I just have to be mathematically, you know, assert my point because, you know, people aren't like, oh, this meter right on, you know, Troy Street isn't available, so now I'm going to go, you know, to Berkeley. No, they're going to park in the garage, they're going to go somewhere else. I also think too, we want to be cognizant and show off our garages. Everyone's complaining about 134 spaces on Washington and around 700 spaces in the city. But really, we have over 5,700 spaces that in the city, 5,000 of them, you know, in private and public lots and parking garages that work exceptionally well for especially people going over two hours, three hours. And I think it's an opportunity to get people to love, and when they come and visit Royal Oak and have a great seamless experience. If Winter Blast is the draw, they get into the garage. I don't think we want to make it too onerous or leave a bitter taste in their mouth. So I think we have to be cognizant of that. Sundays is typically free anyways in the city or in the garages, correct? So that would be an additional charge that we're doing on Sundays. If you kept Sunday free, you know, people would go in and out pretty seamlessly. The other thing too, is we talked about Henry Ford, but what about library hours? Remind me again, is the library in Farmer's Market, what are their hours again during the festival? Libraries open?
Correct, right.
Yeah, so I think even $5 seems a little challenging for me. I think the idea of paying on the front end, you know, to see what happens and see if it slows down the queue, you know, and having an assist there, maybe if we need to, you know, as people are trying to do that. I don't know how we collect that money on the front end. Would it just be cash? Or would they use a credit card machine, with just a flat weight, $3 and the gate would go up? I don't know.
I'll let the chief respond to that, so.
Yeah, ParkRight would have staff there that could accept credit card or cash payments on coming into the garages.
I just, I mean, I get it. I understand the financial, you know, I just think that the most important thing in our downtown right now is to encourage people not to be fixated on the small number of parking spots, but to really understand how awesome and safe and amazing our parking garages are. So I'm not just, I'm not looking at this as like a cost. I'm looking at it as an exposure opportunity for our garages. And everybody that we've converted to going into the garage loves them. And they're easier, they're more convenient. Get the snow off your car in the winter and the rain off your car in the summer. So those are my concerns, but I do think figuring out a solution for the throughput is interesting. Commissioner Macy, and then Commissioner Collo.
So I completely agree with what's been said at the table already by the mayor and Commissioner Duba. And I also feel like the, you know, it seems like we should have the numbers because last year we didn't charge our normal rates, right? So can't we compare from last year? It seems like we should know exactly what, well, regardless. And it also feels to me like if the throughput is our major consideration, and then on Sunday, we should just have the gate up, and it should be free parking the way it always is. Like, I mean, that seems like there's, we're trying to solve a problem with money that we don't need to solve on Sunday because it's free parking on Sunday. So that one should just be, that one in my mind should continue to be free. And I'm interested in these lower fees. And I just also want to point out, I mean, so you're talking about feeding the parking fund, but in the contract for Winter Blast, the excess doesn't go to the parking fund. The contract itself states where anything passed, any revenue would go.
It says net after the expenses of the parking fund are satisfied, so.
Okay, but I don't think they mean you get to pay off the entire parking fund. It says net after you pay off the parking expenses relative to the festival.
All right. So we will work with whatever you said. So that's fine. That's a proposal that we brought forward. And so based on the experience, I'm not familiar with chief, this, when Arts, Beats and Eats, did we charge for parking on Sundays?
Yes, we charge on Sundays also in the garages downtown.
We charge for Sundays right now?
No.
For Arts, Beats and Eats.
No, for Arts, Beats and Eats, of course.
Yes.
Sure. But for Winter Blast last year, did we?
I don't know if we did or not.
I don't believe so, yeah.
Commissioner Collo?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm sort of a lot of things in here. And one is, you know, I think we all agree that sometimes the garages do get backed up, show at Royal Oak Music Theater, et cetera. A lot of people want to leave at once. I don't know if a lot of people coming in at once is also going to leave there, right? Like, this is not like a music theater where, you know, stagecrafters where a show ends and everyone wants to leave, right? These are people coming and going at periodic times throughout the day. Maybe there's a show someone wants to see, but for the most part, this is a random assortment of people coming in and going out. No matter what, the motion's all the same, right? You need to stop, you need to pay, you need to wait for the gates to come up, then you have to go in, and then you're coming out. So I'm not sure how much time is being saved. I'm not a parking expert, but I don't know how much time is being saved with this system. And then, you know, on top of that, the $10, you know, it's been said, well, see, well, I think that there's, you know, this is a family event. We're really trying to promote the city with a parking system that has a black eye right now. You know, there are faults in the system that are prevalent. And this is a PR campaign for us to try to make sure that people know parking is safe and easy in our parking structures. Until we can find a resolution to the ongoing MPS issue, I think promoting the structures is a good idea. In short, you know, I know Mr. Break, you and I talked about this other day. In short, of seeing the parking fund and how much money is available and knowing, is there a net position issue with the parking fund? You know, it's hard to make a determination of $10 being a good amount. At this point, I'd be in favor of leaving with such short notice and time before the actual event. I would leave the systemic fees as is, have people pay the two hours free so they can continue to use the Farmer's Market and the library, which is a, you know, culture institution in the city, as they do. And then pay the, you know, dollar or 75 cents. And then pay the, you know, dollar or seventy-five cents an hour thereafter, which really is an asset to the city.
Yeah, and just on, as well as, you know, the comments that have been made about incentivizing people to use our parking garages. If you have this place, you're charging ten dollars, now you're persuading people to use the meters, which is almost assured to have a negative experience. Or even worse than, you know, so it's not a, in fact, you're doing the opposite. You're saying, hey, come to Royal Oak, we have this awesome thing, and, oh, that's ten dollars, well, I'm just going to park in the street. And then, now they are, like, have that, the glitch issues that have, you know, people are struggling to learn how to use a new system. And then on top of it, they will stay longer than two hours and get a ticket. And I don't know that that's the stress we want to have right now.
But there's also the issue.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, sir, there's also the issue, too. We just passed a second reading of the new, new ruling allowing the chief to determine when a special event permit can have parking restricted in neighborhoods, but that doesn't go in effect for ten days. So, chief cannot block off neighborhoods for this event as he might want to. So, if we're trying to, we push people out of garages, you're right, they're going to go to the meters, but then they're also go to the neighborhoods around the event and put for the downtown. So, I think it's better if we contain the cars in our downtown.
I mean, my dad will drive ten miles to save ten cents on gas, it's crazy. Commissioner Purush?
We came downtown for dinner, not this past weekend, because we were in Minnesota, but the prior weekend on a Saturday night, and parked in the Lafayette structure, because we were going to one of the restaurants in Washington. And it was a flat rate to enter the structure for two dollars. And I don't know whether it was set that night because there was a special performance at the music theater or whether it was a Stage Crafters event or what else was going on. But it was a flat two-hour fee to get into the Lafayette structure. I'm concerned about the queue aspect that the chief is concerned about, that if we don't have a flat rate on entrance, no matter what that dollar amount is, it's going to back up like crazy for people trying to get out. And I think that's a real serious concern. So, I think we need to establish some easy way for people to pay as they go in. And we can set the dollar amount whatever we think is fair and appropriate in terms of all the other parking issues we have. But I would really like to see that as opposed to having the current structure and having people pay with, and, you know, each time they come up to the entrance and exit, you know, to put their card in and so on and so forth. That's going to be a mess. So, I don't care what the dollar amount is, but I think we need to have some kind of entry fee so that they don't have to hassle with that on the way out.
You know, an interesting thought on that, too, is, I'm just throwing it out there very recklessly, but, because I can't turn my marketing hat off. If we have five thousand parking spots and we turn them three times, you know, during Winter Blast, I don't know if that makes sense. Some of those people are going to come out for an hour, hour and a half, leave, some of them are going to stay for four hours and go to dinner and do whatever. But I mean, what would the, for the ones that stay, you know, are you making a buck a turn? You know, so that's fifteen thousand a day, that's forty-five thousand a weekend, I don't know. I mean, there is a thought, like, do you just open the gates? And just tell people, you know, free parking, get used to the garages, love them, you know, this is our opportunity to bring people from all over the metropolitan area to enjoy the parking garages, just a thought. I know that probably would have an issue on our bonds, I can see Mr. Lael over there looking, but, you know, you know, I'm throwing it out there, or for a very de minimis charge, you know?
Yeah, so there are provisions within the bond covenants that you cannot give away parking. So, you need to set some sort of a dollar amount.
Yeah, I figured that was the case.
Yeah, yeah, you'd be in violation of that, so I would not recommend that. Because when we have offered free parking, it's been, you know, the DDA that's paid for that. But if you want to make it, I said this before, make it a lesser amount, we'll track it and we'll have some experience. And if it doesn't meet the costs, I'll bring that back and into, you know, into future years, so.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, what's the old story about the store that had some merchandise that wasn't moving? And so, they told the clerk to change the price and instead of lowering the price, she raised it and it sold out. I mean, there is value, the parking has value. And charging at least a fee for it, to me, expresses the fact that it has value. I would, and I appreciate Commissioner Perush's point, you know, charging a flat fee on the way in, because if people have to go find the kiosk and pay the kiosk and so on and so forth, they're going to be just as mad as they are with our street parking. So, I'll try, I'll make a motion that we charge a flat entrance fee of five dollars per vehicle according to the schedule that the city manager's memo proposes.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by?
Question.
Oh.
I guess there needs to be a second before I ask a question.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion questions, questions, Commissioner Buck?
So, does that motion include charging on Sunday?
She said, based on the schedule.
Yes.
All right, then I oppose the motion.
I'll pose it, because I think five's too high, I think we go to two. I think that's what Lafayette's doing, I think that's, you know, maybe what we should do as well. Two, five seems like a little, like you're hitting us, two seems, oh yeah, two bucks reasonable. But I have no science behind that. And we probably get more money than we would normally if they were open, because most people are staying less than two hours anyway. So, we would see two dollars on every transaction.
Throw in a number out.
Commissioner Hunt?
Was it just established that we did not charge for parking on Sundays last Winter Fest? Then I think we should stay consistent in that with this year and, you know, I don't think five dollars is too much, but I do have concerns about charging on Sunday if that was not what was charged last year.
I would just say, too, that we have the library and Farmer's Market open. And so, five dollars might be a little steep to take back the book. Two dollars, you might be able to be like, eh, you know, there's a festival, if you really have to get your book, you know. Commissioner Dubak?
Try and split the baby, I'll move to him on the motion to make it three dollars on all days of the festival excluding Sunday.
We got three dollars on the table, three, 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 anyone who wants to take three dollars. It's a second by Commissioner Macy. All right, so we have men on the table to move to three dollars excluding Sundays? Okay. Okay, I think, so, any discussion?
Yes, I think, I think Sunday is a day like any other for this festival. And so, I don't mind the three dollars, actually, but I do think we should charge on Sunday, so I will vote against the amendment.
Commissioner Collo?
I'm going to vote for the amendment, because I like three better than five, but I don't like the idea of charging. So, I think when we get to the main motion again, there's more conversation to be had on that.
I like two, but I guess I'll go with three, because I'm a team player. It's all about compromise and negotiations, I guess, get something done versus nothing done. So, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. As on the amendment. So, now we're back to the original.
Wait, wait, wait.
Motion.
Opposed. Opposed.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, those against?
No. No.
Okay, we got two against. All right, so now we have the original motion, which was basically just totally reconstructed by the amendment, which is three dollars. The original motion is now the amended motion, three dollars, not on Sunday. Discussion. Commissioner Collo?
So, I am going to oppose this motion. I still think that we should stick to our typical schedule. One, once again, we don't, we haven't had really good PR with parking, right? And there's really no reason to charge for this. It's not been demonstrated that the parking fund needs money. We have a, we do have a compliance rate that's gone up and the meters are making enough money for the parking fund as been presented to us. Like, if, you know, Mr. Frank came to us and said, you know what, guys? Charging for this is really going to make sure that we're good into the future, that's one thing. But that's not how it was presented to us today. There's only anecdotal evidence that charging when you enter is faster than paying when you leave, unless someone knows something that I don't. And, once again, it's not everyone leaving at once, it's a staggered arrival and a staggered departure. I think we are forgetting about the other users of the downtown. We do have the library, the Farmer's Market going on during this time. And then on top of that, this is just an opportunity, it seems like we're solving a problem that might not exist. You know, there's really no pressing need to change the rate on the lots right now. We didn't change the rate on the lots for Taco Fest last year. We haven't changed it on other events. So, this just seems to be solving an issue that, you know, might be getting ourselves involved on this one. So, I think that this might be a good time to maybe not take action. Let's stay at our two hours free and seventy-five cents thereafter to let people know the garages are there and how good they are for our downtown.
Yeah, I mean, I think Commissioner Collo makes a really good point. You know, the reason why we charge on Arts Beats and Eats is not to make money or cover costs. I mean, I guess it is in a way, but really, another main purpose of it is to, you know, you just have four hundred thousand people coming in over the weekend. You need to incentivize people to take alternative means of transportation to come to the community. It's also our mechanism to offset our DPS policing and other costs. But, you know, the reason why those are twenty dollars is because, you know, that is a, you'd have utter gridlock unless people are making some financial decisions. This is a different event, I think it's around eighty thousand, under a hundred thousand, over four days, three days. I mean, I think the bottleneck thing, I guess Chief Moore, you know, if he says there's a bottleneck, I'm willing to try it and experiment and see if it helps alleviate the bottleneck issue. I do think Commissioner Collo is probably right, like, people are coming in at different times and end times. But I also think that, just in general, most people leave at the same time, because there's usually a, you know, a thing that says, okay, well, we've had our last whatever, and people leave, but people are all different arrivers. So, there's probably some, a little bit more weight on the leaving side of it than on the coming side. So, I want to, I think I'm going to support this motion for the fact that I want to see what happens. I want to see the data, I want to see the information, and I want to see what happens. Commissioner Perush?
I'm going to support it. I mean, the chief's memo says essentially, at last year's event, many festival goers during peak hours experienced vehicle backups as far back at a garage level or two, waiting to pay at the gate. So, you've got cars stacked not just back on the first level, but up to the second level, waiting to pay. That's like twenty cars back waiting to pay. To me, that's unacceptable and it's easily managed by having people pay as they go in.
Well, if the backup doesn't happen all the way on Eleven Mile, or, you know what I mean? Like, we don't know, that's why I think, like, we try it and if all of a sudden people are backing up, you know, on our streets versus the interior of our garage, then we learned something and we know what to do next time. But I think you're probably right, I think it's probably going to be less of a backup on the streets. And by not doing it, we'll have the same as we had last year. So, we might as well take a shot, either way, there'll be a backup, you know? Or there'll be, let me put it this way, if we do what we always did, we'll always get what we always got, which means we'll have a backup up to the second or third floor. If we try something different, it only has, it's like, what's behind door number two? We can see if it works.
Be like going to Starbucks and Boop Bird.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I will say having staffing there also helps when the garage is full. I mean, because people, you know, they're going to look up there and they're going to say, oh, there aren't, oh, it says there aren't any spaces left, but I'll bet there are, but there aren't. And then you're going to have people circling the garage and going up and coming back down. So, having staffing there does help you manage occupancy.
Okay. All right, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Still two, but different two.
Different reasons.
All right, okay. We're tough bargain, you start at ten, you end up at three.
Yeah, now we got the easy item coming up.
Don't negotiate with us. All right, that brings us to the last item of tonight's agenda, which is proposed amendment to the special event permit. Jonathan Witsen Associates Arts Beats and Eats request for cannabis sales and consumption. I think Chief Moore is going to kick off with you.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. This request looks very similar to last year's request. Jonathan Witsen Associates has requested to amend Arts Beats and Eats to allow cannabis sales and consumption for a one-year trial period beginning this year. They're not asking for any other changes other than that. If you remember, in the map included in your packet, the sales and consumption area is located in the same area as proposed last year. It's on the alleyway between Washington and Center, between Sixth and Seventh Street. That area, the proposed area would be surrounded by fencing that would obscure it from any view from street level. And it would also has a designated entrance and exit, which would be staffed by private security. And anybody wanting to enter would have to be twenty-one years of age or older. The police department researched this proposal and discovered there had been three temporary marijuana licenses issued that also involved the sale of alcohol. And those events were located in Marquette, Manistee, and South Branch Township in Michigan. I reached out and spoke to representatives from all of those locations and found out those events were typically held in city parks or similar areas and their estimated crowds were between two thousand and four thousand people. And there were no reported incidents during any of the events there, and they were usually one or two-day events. I did also research the Outside Lands Festival that was held in San Francisco each year. And this festival is a three-day event that's held in the Golden Gate Park. And it also involves the sale and consumption of cannabis as well as alcohol. And that event annually draws roughly eighty thousand people per day. And that festival is also similar to Arts Beats and Eats in that a majority of the footprint is licensed for alcohol with a small area carved out for cannabis sales and consumption. I had extensive conversations with the captain from San Francisco Police Department, who oversees this event every year. And he indicated that they have not had any significant incident in the last four years since adding this cannabis event or cannabis piece to the event. This event in San Francisco has private security officers detailed to the cannabis sale and consumption area, and there are no police officers detailed inside. And they follow this model to protect the police officer from secondhand smoke and the odor concerns that were noted in my report as well. Mr. Witz is definitely understanding of the odor concerns that were brought up during the last meeting and has pledged his support to use fans and other filtration devices to help mitigate those concerns. He's also reached out to the businesses and apartment complexes that are adjacent to this proposed area and has not received any opposition to this one-year trial period. The, this area would offer pre-rolled marijuana cigarettes, edibles, and cannabis vape cartridges. And the private security would be detailed inside to do the identification checks and monitor the purchases and behavior as well inside this area. This area is also near two churches that contain schools, but neither of the schools would be in session during the event. And neither church has voiced any opposition to this trial period. And for those reasons, the police department is remaining neutral. I would draw your attention to one thing I want to clarify on the map. There was an error in what was submitted in your package. There is only one consumption area listed in the alleyway that I described on the map. It's indicated near Fifth and Center, there is a second consumption area. That is an error which has since been corrected, there is only the one consumption area that I detailed in my report. I'd be happy to field any questions that you might have, and Mr. Witz is here and he'd like to give a presentation as well.
Questions? Commissioner Dubak?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the thorough report. As you recall, this was before us last year, and you had recommended against, and, you know, I took a position in opposition as well. I think we definitely know a little bit more, we've answered some of the questions that we had last year. I appreciate you reaching out to that larger festival in California that's much more on scale with Arts Beats and Eats and having that conversation, I think that's really helpful. The one concern you had raised last year that I want to know if you have new thoughts on is, for the officers you have patrolling the tents and their concerns about being in a tent that is dense with marijuana smoke. Is that still a concern, or are you going to have the more masks, or how are we feeling about that?
It is, and maybe I wasn't clear, my thought process is I'm not going to detail any officers.
Oh, is that what you said, okay.
And we're going to follow the model, if this is approved, that San Francisco uses. If there is an emergency or a need for a law enforcement response, we would work with our private security partners and they would alert us to respond. But proactively, I'm not going to have any officers inside the area.
Okay, all right, that's helpful, thanks.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, Mr. Witz, you have a presentation? Come on up.
Sure, I just, I do want to.
Sure, I just, I do wanna extend thoughts and prayers to everybody at Michigan State, where my daughter's at. I don't know, folks have heard, there's been a senseless tragic situation there. So, I will start by sharing those thoughts and prayers. With regard to the presentation, I will keep it moving quickly. It is very similar to last year. What the area will look like, I'm gonna, I appreciate Judy's help here, and we'll skip on to the third. Judy? Again, that's just a viewpoint. The long area is the alleyway. The area to the left is the consumption area. It's eighteen hundred square feet. And then the area coming into the parking lot, which we've had approval from the building owners to use, is the sales area, and that can be reached off Washington. I'll skip ahead to something later. There'd be queue lines. That's what the entrances would look like, so folks could not see inside. Families could not see inside. Families could not get in, and there's queue line space down the alley from the center, going southbound towards Seventh Street, and we would queue the lines around, and then we'd have an exit only on Sixth Street and an entrance and an exit at Washington. So, there would be some real good space for queuing, both waiting on Seventh and also into the sales area. You can see, if you go back one slide, just to the parking lot, you can see that there's also a frontal space where you can have a queue line to get in there for more, you know, queuing of traffic. Just some of the key points. I don't wanna mention them all. It's open air. One thing that's different, the chief mentioned twenty-one plus. One thing I would mention is, in addition to the fans that are pulling air up, we would be adding up to eight filtration filters on the bottom, which would be Meta Air, HEPA air purifiers that are meant for four hundred, five hundred square feet, so we would basically double those with it being open air and have those working on a mid-ground level as well as the fans taking the air up into the air. So, there is a change from last year. Another change from last year is there'd be a private medical professional that would be at the expense of the partner in this, House of Dank, and I want to make a point about House of Dank as well, but there would be an EMS, a private person just dedicated to the area that would go in if needed. Again, so Royal Oak Public Servants would be a last emergency resort there. I think we can go on to the next one. We would also promote, for people that are concerned about smoke, I think a key point I made last year is we would take an active effort in promoting eighty-five percent of the festival is non-smoking. The family areas would be promoted that way. We would not be asking the police to enforce it, but we would have a strong volunteer contingent and signage and asking people to go to an area where you can smoke. So, we do hope to, again, this is only a hundred-ish, a hundred-and-fifty people-ish at a time that are in that area, and we think we can eliminate. Again, not everyone will be compliant, but we're gonna take a good shot at eliminating, especially focusing the carnival and the kids' crafts area and the kids' stage, and really putting a volunteer presence on eliminating smoking in those areas with families. Let's see. The point I wanted to make about the House of Dank is that they should be just included if this is approved as a partner in this, in that they have the license to go to the state, to the MRA, or the CRA, and that would be House of Dank Event Pros LLC. They have the license, so they would actually pull the license for the area on the inside. So, I just want to make sure they're included in any consideration there. The chief mentioned our outrage to businesses and residential areas that are immediately adjacent to the area, so that, we did address that, and had similar emails sent that were forwarded from those organizations and management companies there. And then, I'm almost at the end here, just House of Dank, I want to reference that they're, they've been, they're our second highest supporter. They've been at the event two years, supporting, bringing great activation, and it's, and, you know, just been a great community partner. And the activations that they've had have been well-attended. They've been tasteful. They've been right at the intersection of Sixth and Center Street. We've had no negative feedback from those presentations. In fact, a lot of positive participation in those activities. And then, in last year's proposal, there was a slight discrepancy. I just wanna make a note that the House of Dank is going to contribute seventy-five hundred dollars versus seven-point-five percent of sales to the charity of Royal Oak's Joyce. You know, but I can just say with the amount they're committing to the sponsorship and the cost of running the operation, this is not specifically, this is really more about brand and experience versus a finance, specific financial situation, but they are stepping up with some goodwill with a minimum seventy-five hundred dollar contribution, and that could go, you know, well north of that based on, based on the sales, so. I'm gonna skip over to the end through the case studies with the chief had mentioned, so we'll just plow through those. And I would just also mention that Pine Knob is aggressively pursuing having a cannabis lounge active during concerts there, and there's another venue in Muskegon that's looking at a permanent location with alcohol, amphitheater, four-acre complex. So, a lot of these projects are becoming to the forefront, are becoming mainstreamed. Let's just see.
Couple more points, almost at the end here.
I think our track record of being a low-incident event, the track record of cannabis events being low-incident, the stellar law enforcement planning that has gone into the event, our private security, our partnership dealing with a lot of issues and a lot of people over time, I think make this, you know, really likely strong occurrence that, you know, that we will not have trouble in any way, shape, or form, and we are only asking for the commission for a one-year trial to see how it goes. Let's see. I think I would not make any more, oh, and the other thing is, none of this, this area is not going into our general advertising. There is no, it will be mentioned in TV stories, it will be written about, but when we are advertising a commercial about the festival, it will still be art, music, food, family fun. Those same key points are in all TV, radio, and print, so we are not saying to the event, come and do this, or whatever the case is. It's an experiential, naturally occurring thing, no different than someone, you know, grabbing a beer and enjoying themselves with a legal product. As I said last year, this is our brand, and we take its stewardship very seriously, and we are looking at this as a trial, just like we're requesting it up the city. And again, it may be something that is great and naturally seamlessly fits in, and it may be something that does not go long-term, but I do think we are the right event, the right team, and the right partners, you know, to make this happen, and, let's see. I will leave it to questions and appreciate everyone's consideration on a long night.
Questions for Mr. Witz. Mr. Hunt?
And a question about the security, the private security that you're using. Is that gonna be supplied by Arts Beats and Eats or House of Dank?
House of Dank. It's in addition to the security that we have, and I don't know if Mike Delora's here from House of Dank. I think we talked about a pretty strong contingent of people.
We did. Good evening to you all. My name is Mike Delora. I'm the chief corporate officer of House of Dank. We contracted all ten of our licensed state locations with Ethos Security. They're a state licensed security team. They would come in with their people, and they would, we would be treating this really like it's a, another dispensary with similar type of security. They would be posted up at all of the entrances and exits, and then have someone inside as well for crowd control.
But this isn't like a dispensary because there's gonna be consumption there. So, would these, the security there be equipped to being in a tent where there's cannabis being consumed?
Absolutely. Ethos also has contracts with some of the consumption lounges that do exist here in the state. Hot Box Social, I think, is the most prominent of which, and that is in Hazel Park. So, I do believe that what they do is they have some type of system of rotation, and, you know, I know that it's easy to talk about this being like a Cheech and Chong-type moment, but the consumption area is a max of a hundred people. I think that, you know, you don't see people coalesce around beer carts at festivals either. I think this is gonna be an area of transient space where people are coming through and then maybe using for a few minutes and then moving on to enjoy the rest of the festival. What isn't in our area is a viewing area. There are no stages. It is not designed to be a fit and linger and cause problems type of area. It very much is designed like a typical vendor-type area, but we did want to provide a safe space for people to use to the extent that they chose, but, so we don't think that there's going to be a ton of hanging out there and that people just keep moving through. It is open air with a number of fans and filters, and I know at Hot Box Social and various other events, it's never really seemed to be a huge issue, so we'll see. I mean, it's certainly a matter of first impression, and we're probably overdoing it a little bit with the fans and the filters and everything, but we certainly want to see, you know, how it works.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collo?
A quick question on the fans and filters, actually. Are there any over the vendor area just off of Seventh before you get to the consumption area? So, is there any fan or filter that will try to mitigate the product before it's consumed?
There was none. The area was meant directly for where the smoke is coming up. We didn't have any, any's in other places.
Okay. Has that been an issue in other festivals?
Well, I, other festivals to the, at least there was one cited where they had, you know, I think it being more in a park space, there hasn't been attention to filtration and that. I think we're paying more attention to the fans and filtration being in an urban environment than the other events that have taken, you know, in that regard.
I just, you know, if this is approved tonight, I just, I think in the future, you know, look to, we should look at how this impacts the residents, particularly in the Center Street apartments. I know that they've given approval, and, you know, I just want to make sure that they still feel that way next year, right, that, you know, that this spot, this particular location works out for the city and for the vendors here, so I'm willing to try it for this year. Can you talk a little bit? I really do appreciate the smoke-free eighty-five percent of Arts Beats and Eats. I think that is a huge benefit to the city. How will that be? Can you talk a little bit more about how that might be enforced?
Sure. It would just, it's not about, it's not about enforce, it's about appealing to people's common sense and, you know, it's about making a case with a strong volunteer contingent backed by private security, but never a threat of being asked to leave the event. It's a common sense, hey, they're kids, they're families, this is a non-smoking area, just around the corner is where we're asking if you could smoke. We would take that approach. Again, I think most of humanity would respond positively to that approach, and I think some would tell you to, where you can go, and, you know, those people we're not going to reach, but I do believe, you know, that, I would say, again, without having done it, I'm guessing seventy-five to eighty percent of the people would comply and understand that there are kids there, and here's a smoking area nearby that you can go.
I think in a sign alone, that eliminates at least half of it, right?
Well, there will definitely be signage to those effects as well.
Thank you.
As well as a PR campaign on that, too.
Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the request from Jonathan Wits and Associates, and what's the other corporate name?
It would be Arts Beats and Eats, Inc., technically, in partnership with HOD Event Pros.
HOD Event Pros?
Yes.
Okay. Move approval of the resolution as I just suggested the wording be.
Okay. We have motion by Commissioner Douglas and second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion?
Yeah, I supported this idea last year. I continue to support it. Marijuana legal of the state of Michigan have approved the consumption of marijuana. The people of Royal Oak overwhelmingly approve the consumption of marijuana. This is a product comparable to alcohol. I think I want Arts Beats and Eats to succeed. I think Mr. Witz wants Arts Beats and Eats to succeed, and if we find there's negative feedback after this one-year experiment, I'm sure he and we will all be eager to put an end to it, but I don't think that's going to be the case. I think they've anticipated the problems and the issues, and I feel like this is going to be a successful experiment. I very much appreciate the work the chief did. I understand that no sworn police officer, I mean, the best we can get is neutral, given that marijuana is still a federal Class A substance, so I think he's made quite a journey on this with his recommendation, and I appreciate the research he's done and the information he's brought to us.
Commissioner Doug?
Yeah, I opposed the proposal last year, partially on the chief's recommendation, partially because of the lack of comparable festivals for us to compare, you know, what we know and don't know, and make sure we're prepared for this, given that Arts Beats and Eats is, you know, synonymous with the city of Royal Oak and is our marquee festival for the season. I think, given what we know now, given the chief's neutrality, and I think the very thorough preparation, you know, by the promoter and his partners, I think, and also given the one-year nature of this, right? Which means there's an incentive to go above and beyond and make sure this goes extremely well, and that, I mean, we always get a handful of complaints about Arts Beats and Eats, but we're striving to make it better, and so we don't want to add anything to bring it back at all. We just want to keep enhancing the festival, make it enjoyable for everyone that visits, and enjoyable for residents, and at the very least, not a nuisance to our residents. So, I think all the due diligence has been done here, so, you know, I will support this motion, and we'll see how it goes this year.
Just a correction, it's not a one-year, it's a four-day trial.
One festival.
Exactly, one festival. Anyone down here? Nobody wants to be on the record, huh?
I talked a lot to you. I'll keep on going.
Mr. Macy?
Same, Mr. Commissioner Douglas. I supported this last year, and I'll support it against you.
I don't know how I feel about this. I mean, I don't, I mean, the will of the voters is clear, you know what I mean? I don't have any of these pretentious feelings about marijuana any different than I would about alcohol, but just the same, I wouldn't want Arts Beats and Eats to be an alcohol, beer fest, drunkard fest, and just like I wouldn't want, you know, this to be a marijuana, cannabis-focused event. I wouldn't want anything to detract from the music, the food, and the art. And so, the biggest risk I see here isn't in safety. I trust the neutral recommendation. I trust the fact that, you know, we vetted a security plan with San Francisco and some other communities in Michigan. My concern is, does this unexpectedly become the draw? And, you know, we have, you know, it detracts from the event, but it's not a permanent contract. It's a one-festival trial, and, you know, I'm confident Mr. Witz discussed the marketing plan isn't to go out and put on every headline, you know, come to the House of Dank tent, come here, come here. It's still the same family crowd, and if Dad wants to go in and have a beer and, you know, buy from one of the tents, or if Mom wants to go in, I guess, and smoke a joint, you know, that's their, you know, right to do that, I guess, if we allow it, so I guess I'm not, I don't, I'm not, I'll try not to do a pun. I was gonna say, I'm not high on this, but that would be overdoing it. I won't get into the weeds, don't worry about it. No, I think, I, like, I'm not, and nothing against House of Dank, I'm not, like, super excited, you know, just like if Bud Light came here and said, we want to have a big, huge tent. I would not be excited about that, but I do think it's an amenity. It'll be interesting to see how it works. I'll support it for the sake of experimentation. I'm a little conservative on this stuff when it comes to these sort of changes, because I'm getting older. It doesn't matter what the change is, it's a change, I have a problem with it. So, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. I'll support it, and if it's executed properly and well, and it doesn't detract from the festival, I think it could be something to stay. If it does detract from the festival, meaning it becomes the main focal point and all of that, I'll probably have a change of heart next year, so. Okay, anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I want to say thank you, and also, this is pending state approval and the liquor license approval, so we've still got a few things, and I also would like to thank Chief Moore for the research and collaboration as well, so thank everyone for their support.
Thank you. All right, notwithstanding anything else for the betterment of our community, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. The motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Bruce. Any discussion on this motion? If no discussion on this motion, I'll call for the vote. All who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourn.